The City Council meeting will please come to order. It is July 27th, 6 o'clock. We welcome all those who are visiting with us tonight. We will begin with an invocation given by the Reverend Andy Anderson. Reverend Anderson is the rector at the Church of the Nativity. He has been a great religious leader in our community for nearly 15 years now. And he will be leaving us on August 6th to go to become the director of the St. Mary's Conference and Retreat Center. We will miss you Reverend Anderson. We are glad you can be with us today. Following the invocation by Reverend Anderson, the pledge of allegiance will be given by Councilman Will Culver. Please stand for the invocation.
Thank you very much. Let us pray. Most gracious God, you call us to live together in communities of purpose that reflect your desires of life's blessing for all. We give thanks for this beautiful community of Huntsville, for the many blessings we share, and for our leaders, and all who work to make this city a vibrant and equitable place. Be present now with our mayor and our city council members as they meet tonight and make decisions for the welfare of all. Bless them with the vision to make Huntsville a community of justice, where no one will diminish the rights of others; a community of plenty, where greed and poverty are limited; a community of shared humanity, where success is founded upon service and integrity; and a community of peace, where order is fostered by love and a commitment to the common good. Renew the ties of mutual regard, which form our civic life, so that women, and men, and children from different cultures and differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. Hear our prayer, loving God, and hasten the day of that eternal city that you alone can give us. Amen. Before we say the pledge, I was wondering if I could just take one moment of personal privilege, Mayor, just to thank the council and the mayor for the great work and vision that you have for our city, and for the way you have collaborated with the Church of the Nativity, and enabling us to be a place of hospitality and refreshment for all people of this city, to open our doors, and this kind of collaboration between faith communities and with the civic government is what it all needs to be about, without regard of our own turf and territory, but for doing the best for all people, so that all can share in good things like the Green Street Market and the other things that we do. So I thank you for the privilege of serving our city with you all for the past 14 and a half years of the 11th Church of the Nativity, and I look forward to seeing great things from Huntsville in the future. God bless you all.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Anderson. Thank you Councilman Culver. You have received the minutes of the regular meeting held July 13th, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to be made to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as received. We will move on to resolutions and special recognitions. The mayor has a proclamation for us this evening. Mayor Battle.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a very serious proclamation here tonight, and we would like to ask that the Rocket City Clown Alley, if they would please come to the forefront, so that we can present our resolution tonight. We have had clowns at this meeting before, but this takes it to a new level.[235.12][235.12](Laughter) Thank you.
I'll draw I am.
All right. Everybody?
It won't fit. It won't fit.
Yes, it will. All right. Whereas we have had many clowns in these chambers before, you were the first real clowns, I think, we've had, but whereas you bring smiles to all areas of North Alabama, whereas you also brighten the day of many children and adults in hospital and at community events, and whereas y'all are continually educating the public as to the value of art of clowning, and whereas the week of August 1st through August 7th has been recognized each year by the US government as International Clown Week. Therefore, we name this day, and we do it with noses on, as International Clown Week in Huntsville dated this 27th day of July 2017. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can borrow mine.
Pardon?
You really do.
Okay, would you like to say something?
Would I like to say something? Anytime you can make a person smile, it will bring warmth to your heart. That's why we do what we do. And one thing we always leave everyone with is to tell you to smile, because smiles are free, so pass them on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all the serious business we have, Madam President.
Thank you for that serious business. The council has no resolutions for adoption or presentation tonight, and there is no business with outside legal representation. We will move on to public hearings. We have a number of public hearings to be held. 6A1 now is the time and place for a public hearing regarding an ordinance number 17-408, zoning 26.60 acres of newly annexed property lying on the west side of Sockwell Drive and south of Hazlen Road to Residence 2 District. This was set at the June 8th, 2017 regular council meeting. Before we open the public hearing, we have a presentation by the city staff on this matter. Ms. Nichols?
This particular request is approximately 26.6 acres. This property is located on the west side of Sockwell Drive and south of Hazlen Road. This property is currently unzoned. This property was recently annexed within the city limits back in April 2017. It was previously unincorporated Madison County. This property has a proposed zoning designation of Residence 2 District, which would be consistent with future zoning changes if proposed for a Jackson's Bend addition to If this property is rezoned Residence 2 District, under Residence 2, the following uses are permitted. Single-family dwellings, both attached and detached, are permitted under Residence 2, as well as two-family dwellings, zero-lot line dwellings, and also semi-detached dwellings are permitted under this zoning designation. This proposed developer for this particular addition to the existing Whitesburg Estates subdivision has requested several plat restrictions, which have been adopted by planning commission. Those plat restrictions are listed as follows. Minimum lot area of 12,000 square feet, which is consistent with the adjacent Residence 1A District lot area minimums for the remaining portions of Whitesburg Estates. Also, a minimum lot width of 75 feet, which is also consistent with the adjacent zoning designations of Residence 1A. And also, only single-family detached dwellings can be constructed on this particular property.
We've had a number of questions regarding the drainage and the connectivity in this area, so we wanted to take this opportunity to put together a quick slide that I think has been distributed throughout the HOA. So this is our drainage area map, and just to get everybody a point of reference, this area that is shaded with the red outline is the proposed Jackson Bend Phase 2 subdivision. And then those that live in the area are familiar with the Phase 1, as well as the existing ponds in the area. So again, the intent of this map is to show where the runoff for the proposed development will occur, which they will detain the drainage runoff from the roads, as well as the property, send it into detention ponds, and then discharge it to the north of the property between Grissom High School and this development, which we call the Sockwell Ditch. And once it discharges in that ditch, it will flow south into an unnamed tributary of the Tennessee River, and that is the same ditch that currently discharges directly to the Tennessee River. And so as you can see for the existing ponds in the area, they flow directly south and empty into the same ditch. And another thing that I would like to mention on the drainage for this area is it is controlled by the Tennessee River. And so the flow, the backwater of the Tennessee River is where the elevations are set based on drainage. And what that would do is actually discharge out to the west, towards Redstone Arsenal, before it would backflow into these areas. I know in the past, we've done a lot of maintenance out there due to some beaver dams, and we continue to do that, as well as some drainage improvements in the area. Another thing I would like to mention with the drainage for the proposed development is that some ditches would be eliminated. There's a ditch right here behind Rosenberry Lane that would be eliminated as a result of this development, as well as a ditch right here at Rothmore, behind Rothmore. The next question that we've gotten a lot of concern on is the connectivity. And so this just points out that there are three proposed roadway connectivities in this area, as well as one multi-use connection through a greenway system. So just to get the orientation again, and I do apologize, but we've turned the map on you. So north is to your left, and this is Grissom High School. And of course, south, this is Hobbs Road. This is the proposed development. And so currently, the developer is proposing a connection titled Jackson Bend Whitesburg Estate Connection, as well as an Edenburg Connection that the city has proposed. And so what this shows you is that Hazlen Road extends from where it stops today at Grissom High School, and it will tie into Hobbs Road. We are currently finishing the design on that section of roadway. We anticipate construction late this year to begin. It is a long section of road, so we are anticipating about a two-year construction duration. Next year, we are looking at the greenway paths through this area. There are some grant funds that are readily available that we're going to be seeking in order to get a construction start date of 18 on these multi-use connections. And then you've got the two connector roads that the city are committed to build as well. And so we anticipate that once Hazlen is complete, within two years, we'll be able to begin construction on the Jackson Bend Connector, as well as the Edenburg Connection
And I believe Mr. Sanders also has some thoughts to share with regard to traffic.
Thank you. Dan Sanders, Traffic Engineering. I don't have any slides prepared for tonight, but we've looked at the traffic numbers for adding 38 homes in the subdivision. That equates to about 380 trips per day in and out of the subdivision. So added to the traffic on, say, Mythwood, that would still bring it in under 2,000 vehicles a day, which is normal for a roadway of that classification.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Are any other city staff presenting? The public hearing then on this ordinance is open. If anyone would like to make a comment with regard to this rezoning, please step to either microphones there or here and identify yourself. Please give us your name and your address.
Thank you. I'm Morton Archibald. I live at 2117 Rothmore Drive Southwest. And I have designed, built, and used transportation facilities from sidewalks to airports around the world for 28 years with the Army Corps of Engineers. And I'm deeply concerned about the traffic safety of this, any additions to this. I told the city engineer several years ago, when they showed me the plans for Rothmore, that they were creating more problems than they were solving, and that particularly now Rothmore, the Rothmore Drive Memorial Parkway intersection is a death trap. Under this design, to go left, you have to go 80 feet north in the southbound lane, turn into a very narrow passageway on Rothmore Drive. The other option is Mythwood, which has no turn signal. There's a traffic light there, but there's no left turn arrow. The only safe way to enter Rothmore Drive, or enter Whitesburg Estates, if you're traveling north on Parkway, is to go through English Village, something I don't think the residents there are going to appreciate a lot of extra traffic. And I highly recommend that Aldot fix this problem before we build anything new in that area. If there is, it's just not a matter of if there's going to be a major accident, it's a matter of when. Three years ago, I had a life-changing collision at an intersection that was properly designed, with lower speed limits than this. Traffic on Memorial Parkway goes anywhere from 75 miles an hour down to 5. Yes, I know it's a 50 mile an hour zone, but people don't pay any attention to that. You have slow traffic trying to turn left and right. You have faster traffic is trying to get down the road and get on, out of the county. And this needs to be corrected before any new construction is done. And I have copies of a letter, I believe you have it in your file, copies of a letter I sent to the chief engineer of Aldot, and I have additional copies if anybody wants one. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm Whit Robinson. I live on 2033 Rothmore Drive. Not going to address the traffic, though I have some concerns. I want to talk about the water study, which I think is, being an engineer and having been an engineer for over 40 years, is a little short on facts. I'm far out of that range, and the water from my area flows down into that area. My house is flooding every rain. I haven't seen anybody out there to fix the roads or to change the water. I put over $3,000 worth of ducting in my yard to avoid the water. I'm far out. Everything in our area is moving down to that area. And the fact that you can't do it in my area, and I'm almost three tenths, four tenths of a mile away, and you have extra water flowing in that area, taking ditches out and saying that you've got to put it attached to another pond, the problems haven't been solved since the neighborhood's been there. You're attaching another neighborhood to it, which is adding to the problems. If they haven't fixed the problem before I moved in there for the last 10 years, and I'm dealing with a problem out of my pocket, my money, I don't know what these poor folks are going to do at the end. I think that's inadequate. I think the study is, it's a shame the engineer stands up and says it's adequate. I'm looking at the flow and inflow. I'm a flow engineer. It doesn't work. Talking about traffic going up and down the roads, the only time they repaired the roads is when the Harris Company complained because the trucks literally destroyed the roads, south of Morse House just by me. Road collapsed because of the trucks. They've been complaining about it for years. Nothing was done. If we're just going to help the people that are making money and not help the individuals, what is your job? And I know you guys get money and funding for reelection, et cetera, but it's pretty poor when all the citizens have come to these meetings, 50, 60 people, and nothing's being done, and the people aren't being heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes. Susan Layton, 2002 Danbury Circle. I spoke with you, Councilwoman Robinson, reference us making comments tonight. It was my understanding that this public hearing was strictly going to be on the zoning, and I did not know if you wanted to go ahead and address all the other issues. Do you want to?
If we could restrict it to the zoning, that would be very helpful. Thank you very much. There you go.
Mayor and Councilman, I thank you for allowing us to voice our concern. My name is Elizabeth O'Halloran. I live at 2400 Rothmore Drive. I'm a member of the Whitesburg Estates Civic Association and Jackson Bend Homeowners Association. Combined, we represent 394 homes, with more than 500 voters. The associations have asked me to come and voice their concerns about the zoning of the newly annexed land, which will be the west half of the proposed Jackson Bend Phase 2 development. Currently, the east side of that proposed development, Whitesburg Estates and Jackson's Bend, are zoned R1A, and the homeowners of Wicca and Jackson's Bend request that the city council keep all the land R1A. We have many valid reasons for not wanting R2, even with the plat restrictions. First, Mr. Enfinger is only the developer. In June, we were told by Mr. Enfinger that Stone Ridge Homes would have the first option to build. Now, we are told that that is no longer so, that Mongo Homes has the first option. The reality is that with the proposed front and side yard setbacks, along with multiple unknown builders, the proposed community will not match the existing surrounding community, which is Whitesburg Estates and Jackson's Bend. As you know, Whitesburg Estates is one of the oldest established neighborhoods in Huntsville. Many of the original homeowners, an example being Mo Brooks's mother, when they buy a home in this area, they stay there a long time. When the homes come up for sale, the new families move in, and they renovate, adding to the beauty and the stability of the community. Please, we ask you, do not zone this property as anything other than R1A. To do so would be nothing more than a form of downzoning. The community does not oppose new homes being built, but we do oppose zoning that will allow a clear deviation from the aesthetics of the established surrounding communities and their existing taxpaying voters. Mr. Enfinger has said to us and to this board many times that he can develop this area as R1A. Please allow him to do so. Finally, we were told by Dr. Robinson that Mr. Enfinger could sue the city if he was not granted the requested zoning change. What we do not understand is how a zoning change can be granted by the city without any real public input on how this would affect us. How can this developer fulfill all the requirements? It sounds like the city procedures are not aligned to serve the public in a manner of governing for the people, by the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Halloran. Mr. Mitchell.
Dennis Mitchell, 2208 Sockwell Drive. I have lived on Sockwell Drive for 30 years, and I've watched several subdivisions, additions be built to the west of my property. Currently, there are four single-family homes already zoned R2 in the subdivision. Also, apartments line the rear lots on the east of Eddington. Land to the west is mostly unincorporated Madison County. And then you have Redstone Arsenal. These were already in place before the new subdivision additions. And for sure, none of these impacted the purchase price of my property when I moved in over 30 years ago. Mr. Enfinger has committed to making some trails and paths available to the public. This will be a first for the west side of the neighborhood, and is needed, as there is no direct access to current city greenways and paths. This development, if built as planned, will also open up multimodal connectivity options to the new Grissom High School from the neighborhood. There's been a lot of information spread concerning this neighborhood, the development and the developer, that in my opinion is simply not true. The owner of the property has put before you a proposal that has met, and in some cases exceeded, your requirements. Request you proceed with approval of this item.
Mr. Parek.
Yes, I'm Clay Parek, 2323 Rothmore. I also have some presentation material, so if I could get somebody to work it for me, please? Because I think they're photographs, aerial photographs, that are pertinent to the zoning. It's already loaded on the desktop.
Madam President, do you approve of this? Because we've had a longstanding policy that you have to approve all slides before they're shown.
Yes, sir. And you allow the city, you allow the city?
Madam President, I have the floor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Parek.
And I'm just asking you a question. Have you approved these slides? Because it's important that you see slides before a person presents them to this audience.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Russell has a good point here.
So I'll call for a five-minute break. If you want to review the slides and tell us.
Thank you very much. Could we do that? Appreciate that. Thank you. Could we see the slides, please?
Say it. Hey. You had something on there. I got something on here. Oh, was that last? I swear I didn't get a chance to ask you. Huh? I got an update on one. Maybe I don't have the update. It seems like it was you. Liquor, yeah. The thing, Blue Springs Road. What happened? Yeah, what happened? Here. I'm sorry? Oh, you're from the McSormoy? Yeah. Yeah, right across from where the tent shop is. Have we spoken with the owner? Hey, Jim. I'm going to call on you. He's going to be the one. Good afternoon. We just got a lot of stuff tonight. Oh, no. It's just, here's the thing. I was born in Huntsville Hospital, that doesn't even stand anymore. I started school at East Clinton and finished at Johnson. And though the mayors may change, it's still the same old same old in this city. Same old same old. I know. I know. Same state that made me drive all the way back to renew my license, when federal guys could just smell it. You're not holding anything up. We're just a little break. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Now, it might be that this is an older. Probably working for a virtue, or on this Christmas list, like everybody else. Oh, you're fine. You're fine. So, I'm going to make that. Here it is. A G. I was going to say, he's one who agrees. I want to see how many here don't agree. That was one of my moves, because my thing is on the spot zone. I know. I know that. I'm going to show it. I'm going to show it. It is A G. I think this has been updated, okay, just like you see, July 27th. So just remember, A is an apple, G is a girl. On the internet? Yeah. An older version. It was added.
Meeting will come to order, please. It is very unusual that we have, that we permit the public to do this kind of presentation during a public hearing, but there are many people here, they are very well-prepared, and it is your opportunity to make your point. Please, as you make these presentations, normally during public comments, we permit three minutes. Please limit your comments and go through your presentations as quickly as you can. Mr. Parek, again, could you give your name and address for the record?
And Madam President, if I may have a point of order, there is no time limit on these public comments. However, we want one point to be made, and we don't need the point made over and over again.
Point taken, Mr. Russell. I am suggesting... Mr. Parek, your comments are made to me, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am. And to his point, the councilman is correct, and we've been well-prepared and trying to stay within our limits and only talk within the subject matter, although there are many subjects that are concerned here for us, to talk in the subject matter as the council presents them. And that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Parek.
And part of our points are to point out that there are some issues and mistakes that have been presented by the city. So if I may have someone, please open up my presentation.
Is this your presentation here, sir?
It's that Jackson Bend, JB2 Zone folder, right there. That PowerPoint right there.
Okay.
All right? If you'll go to the first, those are some of the points I want to bring up. Now, because the city in the zoning spot mentioned about water mitigation, may I be permitted to speak on that? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Please, please go with your president.
If you go to the next slide, I want to show, this is a close-up view of the Whitesburg Estates according to the zoning map. Notice that it's all majority zone 1A, and the things that touch it, R2 barely touches it, and C4 barely touch it. I want to note that the blue-lined ditch is the natural or man-made border that runs between that area. So there's a natural divider that unless you build a bridge, and according to my information, it has to be approved by the Army Corps of Engineers because of the system of the way that ditch and the purpose it serves, needs to approve it, and the same way for this proposed road that goes in 2019, would take their approval. So I want to point out that boundary. Now, if you go to the next slide, please, that shows the bigger area. Notice the area we're talking about, it's that small area in red, but look at the other majority of it. It is all green, right? That is the way our community is. And how many here support our community staying one, zone one? Okay, I only spoke once, but you see the point I'm trying to make. That's the illogical flaw in only allowing one issue to be represented once, because how do you know how to rate the magnitude of that risk or that issue? So I consider the council might think about that policy in the future. Now, for the research I did by a legal firm that did to support a city in rezoning and concerning spot zoning, which is his claim that it's not, even though there's a boundary there and the majority of the zone is 1A, it still would be considered spot zoning. Now, good planning practices will prevent the appearance of spot zoning. It stated several things in the article I read. One of them was that which is in the best interest of the community virtually eliminates the problem. So if you prove that it's in the best interest of the community, might I remember and remind you of the show of hands that were here as our small representation, and I know you got the petitions. All right? Spot zoning action can occur in good planning practices or follow. Careful adherence to the suggested standards and procedures will present appearances of preferential benefits being granted in a rezoning action. The best defense being chided in reference against the actions, that's the best defense against us, is to state that the best interest of the community, it's documented in a comprehensive plan and shown in its future land use plans. Now, the only thing that we've been presenting is Mr. Effinger's promises of, oh, it's gonna be a great neighborhood, and this is what he wants. It doesn't say anything about the best interest of the community. Now, on that, and back onto this, in the planning commission, it was mentioned that the city could sue, and we heard that repeatedly, and that we repeatedly heard that the developer has figured all legal requirements, right? Even if we've been told the city statutes, although we were told about city statutes, we weren't given the statute numbers, which allows us to not even research whether we're being told the truth or not. So, here's my thing. If I'm a developer, I buy land, and I look at it, and I say C4 is right there, and I want to open up the bagel shop in the middle of a zone one, and I meet all the city requirements, then that means that you are gonna legally have to approve me. That's the logic that I'm hearing displayed by everything that I've done in the Planning Zoning Commission and here tonight. As long as I follow all the rules, no matter how inadequate they are, that I'm gonna be approved, because you're afraid of being sued. So, now, to the next point, please, next slide. Now, if you notice, on the right is a topology from Google, right? It shows the old natural pond from when that was farmland, right? It shows the natural pond to the north where that one is. If you look at the overlay, now, he's moved Lot 1. Look at how Lot 1 is drawn out. I've measured it. I know those are not to scale. Those red arrows point to that blue-lined ditch, which is the border. We are definitely in wetland area, and it's obviously known from the design of Lot 1. If you do the measurements and look at that, it's clear as day. Now, other thing, from the Huntsville Times last Friday article, $35 billion the federal government is in flood insurance debt. They're gonna raise. Now, the city is gonna say that it's in our best interest to build homes there. Are they gonna tell these homeowners and the rest of us and some of us, who here already has to pay flood insurance? Now, you tell me that their fees aren't gonna be raised, their insurance rates, and these new homeowners are gonna be, be cost with that cost? How is that in the best interest of the community? And the only good thing that's come out of this wanting to be Zone 2 is the rezoning, or attempt to rezoning, is Zone 1, thanks to Mr. Effinger, because it woke up a whole quiet neighborhood. All right, my next slide, please. Now, at the end of Sockwell, currently, in the ditch that's, the two ditches that are gonna be eliminated, there's that big concrete barrier to the top of the red circle, and there's that one big drainage there where most of the water flows. That's been there forever, right? The city established it. Sockwell is on a downhill slope that's been pointed out in this very chamber repeatedly. Now, all that water runs there. Now, you're telling me that you're gonna eliminate that, and that's not needed anymore. Are there gonna be underground culverts? Where's the water gonna go? Because I might add that that currently is in place, somebody tell me, is to take care of the water that flows down Sockwell Street that can take stuff from the top of the street all the way down to the bottom. So, where does that water go, especially now that you're gonna elevate ground six feet up? All right, next slide. Thank you. Now, that's example of the drainage map. It doesn't include the Area 6 with the beaver stuff, but it's close enough to let you know. That map was provided back to us as information showing the water drainage, which we appreciated. But it took an engineer that lives in our neighborhood, that's been working all of our pond issues and drainage issues, to point out five mistakes on it and had to be corrected by the city. I won't get into the aerial photographs that when people from the city commented and told us about all the nice ponds, that we had to point out that that was flooding. Therefore, the city-approved plan and water mitigation plan, and the city's paying money for aerial photographs to observe that and can't even identify what's not as-built, there's an issue there. And that just tells me that things aren't properly being managed, right? All right. Now, as far as the slides, that was pretty much all I had, but I just want to go back to the fact that in those areas, in the water mitigation plan, it's stated, notice there's a tree line there. Trees absorb water. We're taking out a number of trees, and we're gonna replace them with nada except a concrete walking path. So, is that included when city engineering does that and takes that into account? Because the other thing is, we're getting into a point where another speaker is gonna talk about, we have acres of dead and dying trees, right? We have predatory birds, I know, because most of our Muscovy ducks are missing, right? We see it all the time. We've seen eagles, we see cranes, we see blue herring, right? Everything. We've got hawks, everything that fly through there. The tree lines are gonna disappear, and you're not doing anything about it, right? We're already losing some acreage. You're not helping the water mitigation plan, you're actually hurting it by removing that amount of trees to put in homes. And again, my last thing on the walking path to there, until that gets developed, for somebody that's gotta go on that walking path and it connects through, have got to go down to this proposed road that now we see is not gonna happen to 2019, so it's not gonna do kids trying to get to Grissom High any good. They're still gonna have to go out and know Mithwood. And for the city to come and state that the classification of Mithwood, the classification of a drive is not the current status of the drive, I challenge any city council member to come down there, because the only one I know of any ethics up here that's living in this district and representing this people, there's only one of you. Now, for the ones who represent us, I challenge them to go down and drive down Rothmore. Look at the shape it's in. Look at Mithwood. And you tell me, look how many times the city's temporarily tried to fix that turn at the corner off the parkway. That turn is nowhere designed to come off a highway. And when they finish the, yes, sir. And when they finish those overpasses, that Mithwood lot is right there. It's gonna be the only thing there besides that cheesy little Meadowbrook lot, and there's gonna be a lot of increased traffic, because the whole thing is to allow those people to get away. And I guess to sum it all up, I'm just telling you, on social media, there are already people complaining about another development that's got the smaller lots, and they're claiming some of them to be happy that they got a home built in 1969. Don't need to mention the developer, but it's the same one mentioned here. And what I'm telling you is, when you race ground up six feet, you want a short-in-front yard, and you got a short driveway that only allows one vehicle, that is not kosher, and it allows for more on-street parking. So I highly suggest that the city take into account the community's interest and do what the community wants as far as this zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parek. Yes, sir, please give your name.
My name is Tim Payment. I also have some prepared material and...
Your address, too, Mr. Payment.
And I have a scripted, and I will stay very close to my time limits.
Thank you.
I plan to shift gears a little bit. I want to move back. I want to get away from the minutia and simply look at the big picture. And these are not my charts, sorry. I sent them to you, the PowerPoint, I mean, not the PowerPoint, the PDF, connectivity and traffic.
Thank you.
There we go.
And please make your comments brief, Mr. Payment.
2005 Danbury for 28 years. Okay, let's get on with it. The next page, page 38 in your handout, page 2 on these. This just locates the 1,200 homes south of the new Grissom High School, west to south Memorial Parkway, north to Redstone, with farmland, wetland, and Redstone Arsenal to the west. The five roads listed on the east side provide vehicle access. Two roads on the south provide vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian access to Redstone Road. The parkway is the primary path for vehicle-only traffic to almost all destinations, including Grissom. However, many Arsenal commuters exit south to use Gate 3. Next chart. With access points only on the east and west, through-traffic is unavoidable. Through-traffic has grown with each new home for decades and continues to grow today. The gold lines highlight some of the popular east-west and north-south traffic paths that have evolved as a result of incremental development without overarching plan. Reducing through-traffic levels should be a main consideration in the planning of all new developments. Next. From the blue circle marking my home at the northern end, the orange lines highlight the particular set of gold streets I used to get to the, east to the parkway or south to Redstone Road. While the north-south path looks rather absurd, I assure you, it is the best path to Redstone Arsenal for me and the 50 other homes in my corner of the neighborhood. I've driven one of these two paths twice daily or more for nearly 30 years. Drivers take the best path. Next chart. Let's turn to the future. Plans are proceeding for a new road in Greenway on the west side. The magenta and yellow lines approximate those paths. What a great opportunity for the neighborhood. Thank you for your vision in pushing these through. The five white hexagons mark the existing road stubs on the west side that are viable for connection. Let's consider the possibilities. Next chart. Connect any one road stub, doesn't matter which one. I call this the red plan. Whichever unlucky point gets picked will feel the pinup pressure of 1,200 homes seeking an alternate vehicle path north. Expect north-south through-traffic to increase. One road on the west side versus five roads on the east. Drivers take the best path. Next chart. Consider two connection points, one north and one south. The pink plan. North point is the best path for about 400 homes. South point is the best path for 800 homes. Better than the red plan, but would surely require the blue ditch to be bridged in two places, likely twice the cost of the red concept. Next. The green concept uses two stubs north and two stubs south. This concept widely distributes the traffic, provides the shortest walking and biking distances to an access point. Both north-south and east-west traffic patterns should see reductions in through-traffic. While surely the most expensive concept to implement, the incremental costs for second connections without additional bridges should be traded against the potential benefits. Next chart. On 27 June, the planning commission approved a plat that terminates the two road stubs north and does not make any connections to the new road or Greenway. I might add, despite the various versions of that that we've seen today. It's the only one on record that I know. Unless the plat gets modified to at least make provisions for some future connections, the green and pink concepts are dead, leaving planners some variant of the red concept to implement. If red is the best we can hope for, then why are we building the road and why are we building the Greenway? Next chart. We're asking this council to provide guidance that you want the planning commission, the planning department, and the developers to consider the merits of the green concept. And you are not prepared at this time to close options such that a red concept is the best we will ever be able to achieve. Over 200 members of the community have signed their support to the green concept. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Payment. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Ms. Leighton?
Yeah, Susan Leighton, again, from 2002 Danbury Circle. I know we had decided to speak to zoning, but it's obvious we're not there, so we want to go ahead and address these other concerns we have, just to get it done and get it over with. So there are two of us who want to speak. My husband, Bill, and I have lived at 2002 Danbury Circle for 25 years, since he retired from the military, and we chose to make Huntsville our home. It's not our natural home, but it was the community we wanted to live in. I am also speaking as a representative of the Whitesburg Estates Civic Association. We had a meeting with over 100 members in attendance, and all these issues were discussed. Whitesburg Estates is the, one of the older, more established neighborhoods in Huntsville. Recently, with the addition of Grissom, the character of our neighborhood has changed. If you don't believe it, come listen to the band concerts in my backyard. That's fine with us. We have documented with Grissom will come more housing, a connector road, and a Greenway. Much of this could benefit our residents, but we are not able to access it. As Mr. Payment just addressed, we are being trapped in our own neighborhood. We have documented several general areas of concern. We have talked to various city departments, state and federal agencies, researched Huntsville's ordinances, policies, manuals, reports, and updates, and have identified the city's responsibilities in reference to our concerns. We will speak to the top three tonight. Mr. Payment has already addressed the traffic. You each have a copy of the results of the work that we have done, and we ask that you take time later to read this material to get a better understanding of what we are asking. Number one on our list is floodplain and stormwater management. On paper, the pond routing map for Jackson Bend Phase 2 looks good. However, this is not an isolated subdivision. It adds to existing problems. Our neighborhood is in the watershed originating far east of the parkway. Stormwater runoff has increased exponentially with each development along the way. I have stood in this chamber on three separate occasions and raised the concern about flooding of the blue-lined ditch between Whitesburg and the property now occupied by Grissom. And each time, I had a developer on the other side of the room tell me, I have lived here all my life, and that ditch has never gotten to the top. I beg to differ. If you will look at the pictures on pages 11 through 14 of the documents we've handled you, handed to you, you will see that ditch has flooded. The city recognizes the problems of both floodplain and stormwater management in their own documents. We are not trying to stop development, we're just asking the city to take responsibility. In Huntsville's flood management plan, we read, quote, "A floodplain is only a problem if human development gets in the way of or exacerbates the natural flooding." And further, the city addresses the lack of a master plan for watershed in Huntsville, stating the use of retention ponds has a number of weaknesses in managing stormwater, quoting directly, "The use of retention facilities within each watershed is not evaluated holistically." We have provided more detail about stormwater management in the document we've provided you, and we are just asking that the city exercise due diligence, looking at the totality of stormwater management in South Huntsville before all of these isolated developments...
It's not our natural home, but it was a community we wanted to live in. I am also speaking as a representative of the Whitesburg Estates Civic Association. We had a meeting with over a hundred members in attendance, and all these issues were discussed. Whitesburg Estates is the, one of the older, more established neighborhoods in Huntsville. Recently, with the addition of Grissom, the character of our neighborhood has changed. If you don't believe it, come listen to the band concerts in my backyard. That's fine with us. We have documented with Grissom, will come more housing, a connector road, and a Greenway. Much of this could benefit our residents, but we are not able to access it. As Mr. Payment just addressed, we are being trapped in our own neighborhood. We have documented several general areas of concern. We have talked to various city departments, state and federal agencies, researched Huntsville's ordinances, policies, manuals, reports, and updates, and have identified the city's responsibilities in reference to our concerns. We will speak to the top three tonight. Mr. Payment has already addressed the traffic. You each have a copy of the results of the work that we have done, and we ask that you take time later to read this material to get a better understanding of what we are asking. Number one on our list is floodplain and stormwater management. On paper, the pond routing map for Jackson Bend Phase Two looks good. However, this is not an isolated subdivision. It adds to existing problems. Our neighborhood is in the watershed originating far east of the Parkway. Stormwater runoff has increased exponentially with each development along the way. I have stood in this chamber on three separate occasions and raised the concern about flooding of the blue-lined ditch between Whitesburg and the property now occupied by Grissom. And each time, I had a developer on the other side of the room tell me, I have lived here all my life, and that ditch has never gotten to the top. I beg to differ. If you will look at the pictures on pages eleven through fourteen of the documents we've handled you, handed to you, you will see, that ditch has flooded. The city recognizes the problems of both floodplain and stormwater management in their own documents. We are not trying to stop development, we're just asking the city to take responsibility. In Huntsville's flood management plan, we read, quote, "A floodplain is only a problem if human development gets in the way of or exacerbates the natural flooding." And further, the city addresses the lack of a master plan for watershed in Huntsville, stating the use of retention ponds has a number of weaknesses in managing storm water. Quoting directly, "The use of retention facilities within each watershed is not evaluated holistically." We have provided more detail about stormwater management in the document we've provided you, and we are just asking that the city exercise due diligence, looking at the totality of stormwater management in South Huntsville before all of these isolated developments come together to cause a major flooding event at the cost of existing and future residents. We often hear that those of us in the floodplain have flood insurance to protect us. But as already been pointed out, the National Flood Insurance Program is in debt and on the verge of insolvency. It is due for reauthorization at the end of September, and we have no idea what the policy premium structure will be following that. Yes, we have insurance, but at what cost? Over the past twenty-five years, the flood insurance premium on my home has quadrupled. Certainly, insurance can pay for loss, but it cannot replace the homes and memories we hold dear when they are washed away by a torrent of water that could have been prevented had the city been proactive. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kellie Penne, twenty-three twenty-three Rothmore Drive. Thank you for allowing me to address my concerns. I'm here to discuss three issues: complexity, responsibility, and cost faced by HOAs with retention ponds. I live in the Jackson's Bend section of Whitesburg Estates. Our thirty-five homes have an HOA to maintain our common area and three man-made retention ponds. Each pond is very different, so a one-fits-all approach to upkeep doesn't work. For us, upkeep includes things like applying pond treatments, removing pervasive vegetation, bush hogging, trapping beavers, removing beaver dams, et cetera. Our homeowners personally maintain the ponds since we're too small for HOA management company consideration, and pond management companies are hard to find and very expensive. City animal control only deals with domestic animals, so they're no help with the beavers, and wildlife control companies are also very costly. If homeowners in a development are not willing and able to maintain their ponds themselves, it is conceivable that their HOA dues could be more than they can afford. The city often requires land developers to build retention ponds for flood control and stormwater management. Once the builder finishes, all responsibility for retention ponds is turned over to an HOA and homeowners. In effect, the homeowners become an integral part of the city's water mitigation and flood control plan. The problem is, homeowners have no clue what that entails. The homeowners are given no guidance, no instruction, and have no idea the time, effort, and cost to maintain ponds and common areas. Someone needs to educate potential buyers on their full HOA responsibility. Is the city gonna be able to do this because no one else is doing it? Mr. Enfinger has stated that he meets the current regulations the city has for his proposed development. The city also signed off and approved the Jackson's Bend and Tamra subdivisions, but acres of trees in our common area drowned and are dead or dying due to millions of gallons of displaced water because the water mitigation plan approved by the cities for these two developments did not adequately mitigate the flooding in these areas. Last fall, the city devised an additional plan to address the Jackson Bend drainage issues, which cost both our HOA and the city each fifteen thousand dollars. This expense has caused our HOA fee to increase, and it needs to further increase so we can address the dead and dying trees. Tamra is still trying to address their standing water issues. The city has a number of small HOAs with retention ponds scattered throughout Huntsville. The Chaffey neighborhood has concerns because they have unfixable drainage issues with the Lauderdale ditch, which only worsen when we have problems. Please consider that if these three HOAs are all having water issues, it's highly likely others do as well. The city should reevaluate its water mitigation planning requirements. Our concerns are not whether the developer has met city requirements, it's that we do not believe city requirements are adequate. Retention ponds still require major costly maintenance in order to prevent localized flooding. Otherwise, the collected sediment and silt buildup over time could reduce the volume of water the pond can hold, lessening its effectiveness for flood control and stormwater management. Mr. Enfinger's proposed JB-two development will result in Whitesburg Estates having three pond responsible HOAs. That's a hundred and ten houses with seven man-made retention ponds, not including natural ponds. Mr. Enfinger has suggested to Jackson's Bend that we allow the new development to join our HOA so we can enjoy their amenities. Knowing everything we know about maintenance and care of retention ponds, why would we even consider taking on more responsibility and liability? We urge the city council to review and improve the process for incorporating neighborhoods that contain retention ponds. Retention ponds are touted as beautiful amenities with no consideration of the complexity, responsibility, and cost to maintain them. In reality, they affect the entire city's water mitigation and flood control plan, and the city provides no instruction, guidance, or training in their care. With time, many HOAs become less active or even inactive. Neighborhoods often decline. What happens then to these retention ponds? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perique. The developer, Mr. Enfinger, is here. Mr. Enfinger, would you please like to address us?
Thank you. Jeff Enfinger, for those of you who don't know me, I don't know exactly where to begin. There's been a lot of things that's been said that I find to be untrue, and I think that you've got some negative feedback from some of the professional people that work for the city as regards to some of the size or accuracy of some of the complaints. A lot of the complaints that you have don't have anything to do with my particular development, and many more of the complaints you have tonight don't have to do with the issue that's on the table. Having said that, from here on out, I'm gonna try to be y'all's friend because I've learned not to try to make people mad and then work with them, and I've been trying to work with you. Let me make a few statements about the project as I see it, and then if there's a particular question or something someone wants to ask, or the council wants to ask, I'd be happy to do it. This piece of property that we're asking to be zoned R-two is adjacent to R-two, C-four, and R-one. It's sort of, in some ways, it's a transitional piece of property. It is, from an access perspective, dominated by the R-one zoning, and I'll yield that to you. And we intend to do single-family detached housing. When I went to the Planning Department with a request for R-two, they suggested, you might even say required, that we bring it forward with three restrictions, on a plat restriction, one that all, that all, that these three restrictions would comply with R-one-A zoning. And that's twelve thousand feet, as you know, seventy-five feet, as you know, and only use single-family detached housing. The legal department for the city will tell you that I don't have the ability to modify that once the plat's recorded, and that that plat will follow my development. It'll be recorded before my final plat is recorded. The development is fifty acres. It's only forty-three lots. It's gonna have a seven acre, seven acres of lakes. It's gonna have a one-mile walk-in trail. That's just not the kind of development that ruins property values. We will be at or above any group of housing within three or four miles, maybe ten miles, of that particular location. Stone Ridge Homes was going to be the buyer, but they sold to a Washington firm, and so their plans changed. Mongo Homes is gonna be building, they've presented the plans to me already, I've mentioned, I think, to Susan that those plans are available for you to see, but they're twenty-eight-hundred feet to four-thousand feet. They're gonna be, it's a very, very nice development with upper-end housing. This is a nice, very nice development. It's gonna be beautifully, beautifully done from an aesthetic perspective. It's going, it's going to provide access to the, it will facilitate access to the Hazlen Road Extension when that's done, so that will be a good thing for the whole community and good for Grissom as well. You'll have bike access as well as overtime vehicular access. It's a, I don't believe I've ever made quite as many people mad over what I think to be not, I made people mad before where I really thought I might be, my interests and their interests differed. But in this case, my interest and y'all's case don't, my interest and y'all's interest don't really differ that much. And y'all may not believe me tonight, but as you, as we go into the future and you see this development, I believe that you'll look back on it as something that would be very positive for the, for the community. One last point. Last, at the Planning Department, when we did this before, one of the concert, one of the problems y'all had was Lot One, and you wanted access back to your homeowners' association land. At that time, I didn't know that I could move Lot One from what was then its current location that was backing up to Jackson Bend, four or five-hundred feet north of there, but we were able to do that. It gave us a funny configured lot for Lot One, but my buyer bought into that and let me move Lot One. So now, the walking path that connects to, ultimately connects to the Hazlen Road Extension and the, and the bike, and the pedestrian easement that goes through that, through what will be a future park, will go along the back of Jackson Bend, and y'all will have, we will be in a position to give y'all permanent access down that road to your HOA. We're doing everything we can do to get along, and we want to do that. We're not doing that because anybody's making us, that's what we want to do. My position is that this is a reasonable request, Councilman. This is consistent with the zoning, it's restricted by the Planning Department, and it is a, it's a very positive development for South Huntsville, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enfinger. I wanna give the city staff a chance to respond, but before we have the city's staff respond, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? Ms. Reed, and then one other gentleman. Ms. Reed?
Thank you.
Oh. Ms. Reed, proceed, please.
Go ahead, okay. Maybe you all need to come to the Planning Department meetings. I was here the other night, on a Tuesday night, when all these people, there's twice as many here, went over this, and it was a whole lot worse. They was trying to tell everybody something. It went on and on and on. They got traffic problems, flooded problems, and everything. So even the traffic problems weren't addressed. It sounds to me like, if you don't have a complaint department in this city, you need to get one. Homeowners down there had to stop some flooding and pay for the flooding where they'd been calling, and nobody helped them. They went together and got the money and fixed it. So you all sit up there, and I don't think you know what's going on in your own neighborhoods, but you need to find out about the Planning Department. They passed this. And I said, if I had heard that many people complaining about the traffic, the roads in the city, and not looking into this and doing their job, how can you sit up there and vote on this? So maybe the Planning Department needs looking into. When these developers walks in and presents a good picture, they bow down to them. And y'all are so busy helping the big-money boys out here, but you better come in-house and find out what's going on, because these people are serious, and there's about three or four times as many here the other night when that passed. I didn't know it was even on the agenda tonight, I was gonna talk about it anyway, because I thought Whitesburg Estates got railroaded over development. And not only is the zoning change, it's setbacks. Y'all are giving everybody setbacks on every development, just like in taking all the yards, front and back, and side streets. Stop changing everything in this city. Use some common sense up there. I don't like to fuss on you all the time, but the public and the people is who you're supposed to be working for. If the developers can do a better job, and you all are working with them to take care of these problems, and y'all can see how you can satisfy these people, then go ahead. But if this is going on, you need to find out and try to help it. And the city needs to know more about their planning before they okay anything, in my opinion. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Ms. Reed, just to, just to set the record straight, the city worked with the homeowners' association and helped fund that mitigation project. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Eric Post. I live at twenty-four twenty-four Rothmore Drive. I'm at the very end of Rothmore, I have a nice cul-de-sac lot. Two comments I wanna make tonight. One on the flooding issue. The development that's gonna go in by Mr. Enfinger, he's gonna have his drainage ponds go into the blue-lined ditch that's gonna go down to the tributary that goes out to the Tennessee. Two years ago, when we got all the floodwater, there is a green strip of grass that goes between the pond that's, that's west of my house and that tributary. That, that green strip of grass was gone. That water that came in, that flooded the valley, came within a foot of coming up into my yard. And I'm at the bottom of that ditch. So to say that there's not a drainage problem going at that tributary, it's a big mistake. There's no access for the city or county to get to that tributary to be able to dredge it out, to clean it out. So if some trees fall in that tributary and it blocks it up, and we get another thing from two years ago, that's gonna flood all of our yards in that subdivision. Second comment is on the zoning. The zoning map is showed blue all over the place, that directly abuts to the new proposed land by Mr. Enfinger. We talked about this at the zoning planning meeting. He said twice that he's willing to do 1A in that subdivision. It's on the YouTube video, you can take a look at it yourself. He said it twice. He's okay with that. If he's okay with that, and the predominance of the subdivisions in that area is 1A, then why not keep it 1A? Why change it? Why put a pocket of two in amongst of the 1A? I didn't understand it then. I asked a question to the city planner that was sitting up there, saying, well, if you're giving him, proposing two with one restrictions, why not just give one with one restrictions? Why change it? Because with two, although the intent is not to give us anything less than single-family detached, two gives multiple-family detached as well, duplexes and the like. That would affect our home value. So if he's willing to do 1A, like you said a couple of times in the, in the planning meeting YouTube video, then give him 1A. Don't change it. Thank you.
Mr. Perique, twenty-three twenty-three Rothmore. As Mr. Enfinger said, we could ask a question, but I do have a question, ma'am, for the city attorney, because this is contrary to what Mr. Evans just said, and I must admit, he's a lot, he's a lot better spoken, he's a lot more gracious and kind, but when you make false statements, they're still false statements. In the planning meeting, which I've downloaded, and me and my wife watched the whole three hours and something again, and that's when we observed that the Chaffey neighborhood had the same concerns. Mr. Evans said that he was pretty much forced into the plat restrictions, right? And that in thirty minutes later into the video, he's stating that if he would've known all this issue was gonna be, he could've done it 1A, and he should've done it 1A. And he stated just as before that he can't do it, so why doesn't he do it? Now, it was stated to us that it takes the property owner who established the plat restrictions can have them removed. So I would like for the city attorney to clarify this, because from what we were told by the city Planning Council, he can change it if he decides to change it on. He has to go through a thing. And to the point of that, the city Planning Commission said that for, to put the restrictions on the R-one-A to get the short up front was a little bit more inconvenient as far as it took for that. It's more involved for the city. What I would think, that the city would put its citizens first and do the little bit of extra work to keep it 1A and allow him these short front yards if he thinks that's what people wants. All right? And one other point I forgot, and the issue about the beavers that down in the blue-lined ditch repeatedly, you know when you just break down the beaver dams? They have a tendency to go and get more trees and take them down, so the city's not handling that appropriately, hence why we trap them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perique. Is there anyone else who wants to address, who would like to address the council? Mr. Enfinger, one last comment, and then we will turn it back to the city staff to answer some questions.
I don't know. I may have been misunderstood. I did say that I could have developed it R-one-A, but we're requesting two, and that's our, that's what we're requesting tonight, so we stand by our request. Can I, I'm sure Trey can. Let me, about the difference between restrictions and a plat restriction. I do record restrictions, and when I, when I record some restrictions, I do have the rights in the documents that we submit to reverse things or change things as time goes on as is necessary. That's not what this is. This is a plat restriction, and so this is something that's a document that the Planning Department records with and in conjunction with my final plat. It's not something I have an opportunity to touch again.
Mr. Davis, there were a number of questions here that have arisen with regard to plat restrictions, spot zoning, why are we zoning this too instead of 1A? Then, related, unrelated to the zoning, but of concern to the neighborhood, concerns about the blue-lined ditch, Sockwell ditch flooding, the Mithwood traffic, and particularly access to the Parkway, which-
access to the Parkway which could be addressed when we redesign that portion of roadway and connections to Hazlen. There were also issues with regard to the detention ponds. That's not germane tonight. I don't expect you to address that, but it may be something you'll want to look at later. But could you address those other issues with regard to zoning and connectivity?
Yes, Madam President. Remain there with the council, the public. My name's Shane Davis, Director of Urban Development and Economic Development. The purview and leadership, I have the responsibility for planning, zoning, engineering, traffic engineering and some other departments. There's been some passionate comments made tonight and I certainly respect those, but also respect my staff. We have spent many, many hours on this. I'm not here to persuade the council to zone one way or the other. That is not the job of our employees. It is to provide you information for you to make the right decision that you feel is the decision to be made. I'm going to start first with the Parkway. I know there was a lot of comments of coming ingress and egress from the east side of the neighborhoods. I want to remind the public and the council, we have an access management project through this area that was part of a restore of roads. It's a 50-50 partnership with Aldott in the city of Huntsville. We're about 30% complete with those plans to present those to the public and later this year or early according to the timing with Aldott, but there'll be a public meeting for all of South Huntsville to come out and review those, make comments. We'll take those comments and make changes. A lot of those are additional decel lanes into neighborhoods, access management and medians. So we're trying to get that together so we can present it publicly. We're jointly working with Aldott to improve the Parkway, change some signalization and improve some signalized intersections. So we realize there's a problem there. That's why we fought with Aldott to make that part of the 50-50 Restore Roads project for our city. So that is progressing very well and you will see that change coming. As far as the development, so anytime we annex a piece of property and you vote to annex a piece of property, the next step is to zone it. Typically, that applicant, that landowner requests a certain zoning to the planning and zoning department. First, they look to make sure that the request is not a spot zone. This is not a spot zoning situation. We realize what the Alabama law is and we will not violate that. With this being a unique situation of predominantly R1A, but it does have the proposed or requested zoning attached to that, we asked Mr. Enfinger to do something that he's not required to do and that was to provide a design of the subdivision that he would propose in that zone, should he be approved that zone. We bring you all the time pieces of property for zoning and sometimes rezoning to where the planning and zoning department will simply say, the landowner has requested zoning, it's contiguous to light zoning and you make the decision on that. We knew that this was sensitive, but with all the infrastructure assistance we've provided in this neighborhood and we continue to provide. We are a partner of Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend, and we will never change that. I don't think this council or mayor would allow us to change any type of policy of not having a partnership. That's what good government does. So we asked Mr. Enfinger, our staff, to take it a step further before we would present it to the planning commission or this body here tonight of what are you going to build? We want to see a layout. He graciously gave that. That's when I directed our staff and myself to meet as a group and review traffic conditions, drainage conditions, setbacks and the like. Connectivity, knowing the Hazlen Road and the connectivity we're bringing into the neighborhood as part of that massive investment in the community. We're currently looking at a $25 million worth of city investment with the connector roads and Hazlen Road and the Greenway connectivity. So we're doing what we've said we've done with our master plan and that is going back in existing neighborhoods and making a reinvestment. If you look throughout our city, that is where you're seeing the city invest and it's all over the city. It's north, southeast and west. You don't see us doing a lot of new infrastructure into open cotton fields like we did in the late 90s, early 2000s. We're back into our existing neighborhoods because that's where we want to be and we've heard from our citizens, that's where they want their government to invest. And we're listening, we're doing that. So I wanted to bring those up. As far as the drainage, with working with Jackson Bend and Whitesburg Estates, Marty Calvert and Kathy Martin in engineering and myself and Dave Scroggins and working with the HOAs, we knew there was an issue on the north side of the existing Jackson Bend, Phase 1, as I would call it, in Whitesburg Estates. So then we went to the engineering consultant that is designing the layout for this proposed new subdivision and we requested and ordered for them to rework some drains and pick up some existing drainage that wouldn't be part of this new subdivision and bring it into this proposed Jackson Bend Phase 2 to help the existing Jackson Bend and Whitesburg Estates to take some of that water out of those ponds along the north boundary of the existing homes. They've agreed to do that. Engineering has reviewed that design to ensure me that it works. We've also, in our drainage, I know some comments were made about our floodplain management plan and our drainage management plan. We take that very seriously anywhere in the city. We understand flooding and we have that occasionally. A couple of Christmases ago, we had some massive flooding throughout the city. It was from Limestone County to Hampton Cove to South Huntsville and we understand that. There's just some events that can occur that no drainage system's going to happen. You see it across the country. They don't happen often, but they do happen. So from that, what we do in our policy is whatever the current drainage that is leaving that property undeveloped, a new development whether it's this proposed development, no matter what the zone is, whether it's R1A or the like, their discharge from that property cannot exceed what is current drainage leaving that property. That's why you have retention ponds. So we call it a pre and post-development drainage calculations. Those are submitted, they're stamped by a professional engineer. We have a staff of professional engineers who review that. A lot of times it takes two or three iterations because we make several comments. We question a lot and in that iteration will still have to come. We have a general layout, we've got some preliminary results, but once the development moves forward, that process will still occur in the engineering department. The traffic counts, we set counters out in the neighborhoods, the traffic engineering department did, counted that traffic. We know what two-lane roads capacities are, three-lane roads, five lanes, so on and so forth. The additional housing that is proposed with either zone does not adversely affect without the connector roads. If we build no new roads, they're adequate to handle those in comparison to other subdivisions we have on the east side of the Parkway and Hampton Cove and North Huntsville and the like. So all I wanted to do is bring to the attention of this council and this body that our staff has done a really good job. We have not seen any impediments that would adversely affect our community. Now, to say I'm advocating a zoning either way or the other, we are not as employees and as your staff. We're only presenting the facts and you get to make that decision. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
I guess we move to approve or?
Second.
A motion from Mr. Keith, second by Mr. Culver. Council members, is there a discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Madam President. So, and I'm listening very carefully to all of the concerns that are being espoused here. And some of the questions that I had are some of the same questions that you all had as it relates to the ingress egress from the Parkway seemingly that is resolved. It's not a spot zone, which puts us in an illegal mode. That's not an issue. The Enfingers did something different, not out of an obligation, but because they want it to be transparent and that is presented a design or layout of the community for anyone to review. Another concern is whether he can go back and change the plan. He can't go back and touch the plan once it's done, which hopefully satisfies a lot of concerns. And the drainage, and let me say this. And Mr. Davis, you may remember when I had a major issue on Zert Road with the flooding, when it rained, we had to send a police car there to direct traffic. That was at Zert and I believe Fox Run or something like that. And our engineering department under the direction of Mr. Davis and his staff went in, instituted some underground sewers that went, I want to say 100 yards or so, took the water away, took it underneath the roadway into the Tennessee River. So let's not second guess our engineering, our traffic folk, because they are the experts. And Mayor, you have done a great job with putting the right people in place in those positions. The traffic count, we get those concerns quite regularly. We know how to fix that. And even without, what I'm hearing, even without the added ingress egress that we're doing in conjunction with Aldott, seemingly the roads that are currently in place can accommodate an additional 48 houses. I would be remiss too if I didn't say this. If I were living in your neighborhood, and I'm not, I'm up north in Providence, I would want and welcome a builder like the Enfingers. And let me tell you why. I have followed them. They have communities in District 5 that I'm so blessed to represent. They have never, ever built what I would regard as a tawdry community. And you can check that out for yourself. Now, I wish I could say that about every builder. There are some areas in the district that I'm so blessed to represent that I wish we could go in and just level it and start over. Y'all have seen some of those kinds of communities. But I know unequivocally that if we, and when I say we, I mean the city of Huntsville, you as residents of the city of Huntsville, Mr. Enfinger as a developer, if we keep the communications open and deal in facts and not fiction, let's continue the dialogue. I know unequivocally, and I say this quite regularly, if we can put man on the moon in this city, we have the ability to address any concern that we have if we work together. So don't tell folk that the city is just doing stuff and we are just catering to the big developers. Not true. Not true. I refute that. Not true. So let's continue the dialogue and work together and try and resolve the differences that we have, the real differences that we have. And Madam President, it's not my district and I know I'm probably speaking too much, but I just felt compelled to say that. And y'all, we love you all. I don't represent District 3, but I'm still your council member. I represent everybody in Huntsville. We all do and we are concerned. So let's keep the doors of communications open and continue the dialogue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. And one I will say, everybody that came out, thank you for the information. We actually love this type of stuff for doing the homework for us. It gives us a different perspective, but staying completely objective, which is tough to do in situations like this. Ms. Nichols, to your knowledge, would you say, and this is specific to the zoning, that there is another example of an R1, R2A mix?
The most recent development that I can think of would be the McMullen Cove subdivision. It actually has three or really four different zoning designations. There's a residence 1A, residence 2, 2A, and I believe there is also some C5, but that's primarily the clubhouse. Also, McMullen Cove is a private subdivision. Planning Commission has the authority over all public subdivisions. City Council has the final say-so on private subdivisions.
Has the congruency of this R1, R2A mix, has there been any issues? Have people asked for it to be back rezoned 1 or rezoned? Has there ever been any issues or any individuals?
Not that I'm aware of. There have been several rezonings within the past, I'd say three to four years. Most of McMullen Cove was annexed and zoned prior to my tenure here with the city of Huntsville.
Thank you so much. Shane, quick question. So if this was R1 or R2A, really my question is the 40 homes. How does the 40 homes, no matter the zoning, if 40 homes are on this property, how does it affect flood? How does it affect anything? No matter what the 40 homes look like or if there were 40 homes here, how does it affect it, in your opinion?
Very good question, Councilman Keith. That's what our staff looked at. The change is really the setback, the front yard setback. As far as the drainage, the size home that is being proposed on these lot sizes doesn't change our calculations and determine the drainage and our analysis in that doesn't change the traffic patterns and the traffic count. So, you know, if you're building 40 to 43 homes, no matter what the zoning, the lot size remains the same, so the runoff is the same.
I understand.
So the impact is not there. I want to bring up one other thing and I know Councilman Keith's got the floor, but I tried to remember everything that you mentioned.
Hang on. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, ma'am, you can go ahead. I got mine written down.
Mr. Davis?
Just real quick, there's been some confusion on the restrictive plat that we're requiring and that the developer could change that. So there's two recordations that typically occur on a subdivision. One is restrictive covenants and that is typically recorded by the developer and that is minimum square footage. It can say no front and two garages, so on and so forth, landscaping minimums for that subdivision. That is typically required or recorded by the developer. There's a restrictive covenant for his or her development. The restrictive plat is recorded by the city of Huntsville. And I want to make that clear distinction that we control the plat, we are the ones who go to the courthouse and record it, not the developer. And I want to just point that out.
Well, that leads into my second question and I, to be honest with you, I wish a lot of people cared about their neighborhood like these individuals do, but do we sort of work with that plat restriction in order to have congruency, not only to property value, but a feel of the aesthetics of the neighborhood?
Is exactly why we're asking for it and requiring it should this move forward.
So would it be extremely tough, I guess, and this is, I guess, my opinion, I mean my subjective question for your opinion, would it be tough to develop 40 bad homes with quotations on this lot, either R1 or R2 with that restriction?
It'd be very challenging just due to the construction nature of this piece of property and what they're proposing. The lot prices are going to be very expensive, so naturally you're going to have to build an upper-end home for it to just pencil out economically from a development standpoint.
And to your knowledge, and this is my last question again, this is a tough one, but build out, I'm not a home builder or anything, but it is not 40 homes dropped in at once? Is this usually phased out that we usually see with home developments?
You know, given the popularity of South Huntsville and Grissom High School coming online, I would think to finish out this subdivision would take about 24 months, 24 to 30 months total.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Russell?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Nichols, I had a question for you. You made a statement, I may not have quoted you accurately, but it confused me. You said this proposal will be consistent with future changes in zoning. Obviously, we're not talking about future changes, but how can you predict future changes to be consistent with them?
Well, this particular Jackson's Bend Phase 2 addition is comprised of two different zoning portions. What you see today is the newly annexed piece, which has no zoning designation. What you will see next month will be the eastern portion, which is the Sockwell property and I will highlight that now. This property was already existing within the city limits. It's currently zoned residence 1A, but it was previously undeveloped. This property is also a portion of the proposed Jackson's Bend in order to meet the design or intended design of the developer, Mr. Enfinger. He has submitted a rezoning application to rezon this property from residence 1A to residence 2 with the same plat restriction. So there are two components of this particular subdivision. So that's what I meant by if there is a future change, that would be the future change.
Okay, but currently, right now, the Sockwell R2, if you were to label it tonight, what would it be labeled?
It would be labeled R1A, which is the existing and original zoning designation.
And so, council members, we've had this issue many times in my district and Mr. Enfinger is a good friend of mine and I hope he's a good friend tomorrow, but we'll see. Please don't take it personal. We talked about that, that when we try to protect homeowners, they buy next to a piece of area that's zoned and if they're against it, then I don't think we should rezon it. And that's what's concerning me about this. And I've gotten voted down four to one on this many times, so, and I, and last time it was actually in my own district, you know, and I tried to stick up for it, and, uh, just got packed, and, uh, y'all probably all remember that. So, I'm trying to be consistent in the way I tell, tell my constituents and these, and other citizens why, why I, I think that. And, and it just seems like if you buy your house and you look in a vacant lot, we always tell them to check the zoning in a vacant lot so they don't get an apartment built next to them. And these people have checked that zoning, and they liked the zoning, and they bought their house. And now we're coming in and telling them, oh, no, that wasn't a good zoning, let's do a better zoning for them. And, and I, I would probably agree with everything Mr. N-Finger said. I do agree with, and I agree with a lot of things Mr. Culver said. I think he's built most of the houses in, in, a lot of the houses in my district. They're much nicer, you know, the new products are much nicer than many of the homes in my district. You know, they're great houses, and he does great developments, and they're beautiful, and they have everything he promises, and he always has come through. But I just don't, I don't know how we can make that argument that we, when so many people are against it, that we think we know better than them and can change the zoning. So, that's just my question, and I...
Yes, sir, and, and this piece, you will see next month, um, that will be on the August twenty-fourth meeting. Um, the Sockwell portion, that's the rezoned part from 1A to 2. Tonight is the unzoned piece of property, which is newly annexed.
Right, right, and I just, it just felt strange to me that you've got it up there R2, and I know that it's, I don't know, it bothers me.
It's, it's just the, uh, proposed zoning and annotation, so you'll know which, which areas, which. I can't turn it off without turning them all off, but...
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Other questions? Mr. Kling?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I guess I want to go back and maybe rehash a couple of things and just see what, what the impact's going to be on the adjacent neighborhoods, because what we're talking about, it is going to, uh, come down on the, uh, adjacent neighborhoods. Uh, what was the Planning Commission vote? Was it unanimous? Was it a split?
Um, I believe, uh, Jim, do you recall? I think it was split. Um, there may have been two or three parties, um, that were nays.
I mean, what was the vote? Was it like sixty-three?
Um, I think it may have been four, four to three. And it was recommended to, uh, recommended by Planning Commission to proceed to City Council.
Okay, the, um, okay, we've heard a lot about deed restrictions. And again, repeating one more time, Shane, uh, guess whoever wants to answer this, if, if deed restrictions are put in as part of this rezoning, what guarantees do the residents of the adjacent neighborhoods have that the, uh, you know, the re, you know, reza- excuse me, that the restrictions are going to be there?
I, I can answer that, Councilman Kling.
I don't know, Trey Riley, attorney, Shane Davis, whoever.
Mr. Davis, and then Mr. Riley, if you have anything to add.
So, so the city of Huntsville is, would be the recording authority that would record the plat, uh, not the developer, as, as with any development. He would sign the plat, our staff would sign the plat, and we would go and record that. Um, I've been here seventeen years. I've never seen a plat restriction try to go through the process of going back through Planning Commission and coming before this council to try to lift a deed restriction. It is very, very difficult to do. I've been here seventeen years, I've never seen one happen. It's not impossible, but, but it is very, very, very difficult, very difficult.
So, would it, with the motion that was on the table, uh, is that inclusive in guarantee that if the motion passes, that the deed restrictions are once and done for good?
Yes.
Now, we're, we're not speaking of deed restrictions, we're speaking of plat restrictions. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting my semantics mixed up, but...
But, but Councilman Kling, answer your question is, is yes. The project would not move forward with, without that plat coming as we have requested. We would not sign and record the plat without those restrictions. So, without that, the development could not move forward. So, so the city is in control of guaranteeing what we've requested.
So, the motion on the floor would contain, or it does guarantee that those plat restrictions would be part of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Councilman Kling also want to add, those plat restrictions have been recorded, but those plat restrictions cannot go in place until there is an actual zoning designation, change, whatever, to the property. So, right now, they're just recorded plat restrictions, but they do not apply just yet because this property is not Residence 2. Um, also, uh, Mr. N-Finger would be required to go back through subdivision, and he will have to resubmit a new preliminary layout to show, I guess, his new Lot 1 that has been moved, as well as, uh, the new connectivity. And if, when he does that, uh, public hearing notices should be mailed out to all of, uh, the adjacent residents.
Okay. What protections are there going to be to the adjacent property owners, many in the audience, uh, that their flooding problems are not going to get worse as a result of any action that we take tonight?
Well, Council, Councilman Kling, I, I will address that. Um, as Kathy Martin shown, and we've sent maps out to, to the residents, and I hope most everyone received those. We tried to get those in conduits that could disseminate that. The proposed subdivision, whether it be 1, um, R1A or R2, uh, we would require those retention ponds are going to be required by our subdivision owners to be built. And then we're requiring those to, to discharge to the north to what we call the Sockwell Ditch, which during the Grissom High, uh, construction, we jointly worked with, uh, Grissom High School, the school board, and the city to widen that ditch and, and to better allow more efficient flow to the south towards Tennessee River. So, the assurance that the proposed subdivision, no matter what the zoning, we're going to protect the existing residents from that. Uh, we've got continued work, we've got continued work to do further south with controlling Beaver Downs. We have that same issue in Councilman Culver's district out near the Dirt Road and Martin Road. Uh, it's just a fact of life, and, and we've got that in, uh, Councilman Russell's district in, in Hampton Cove. And Public Works and Engineering routinely go out, that those are on what we call a high-activity list of going through those areas of known, uh, Beaver Downs with Public Works and Engineering. We'll continue to do that irregardless.
Okay, uh, so that's going to be, that's going to be locked in as, as guarantees that you're, that you're telling the council tonight, that, uh, this thing moves forward, uh, all those flooding protections are going to be in there. The city's going to move ahead, that's part of the plan, which y'all will be bringing to the council, correct?
Councilman Kling, yes, that's our normal course of business.
Okay.
Ms. Reed, please, keep your comments to yourself.
Okay, talk about the, uh, the traffic flow, left turn lights at, uh, Rothmore, Mithwood. Is that, uh, is that going to be in the game plan as far as traffic?
Well, as, as I mentioned, the, the Restore Roads project, we're working with ALDOT now for, uh, a, a new layout through that section of Memorial Parkway. Uh, will, will include some intersection upgrades, uh, some median crossovers that are very much, uh, enhanced, and then some D cell lanes into neighborhoods that are much longer to allow stacking and a slower movement in getting into the neighborhood. The design standards from when Memorial Parkway was originally built and those turn lights were put in versus the, the new standards, they're, they're short bays. We, we don't, uh, disclaim that. Uh, but we're working with ALDOT Traffic Engineering, myself, Engineering Department. And as, as I said, we're approaching a thirty percent, which is really a rough conceptual. Uh, and we'll have a, a public meeting that's required by the project to get public comment and then come back with more changes, and then roll it out to the public at, you know, about fifty percent. Once we've done all we can do and the public seems satisfied, then we'll take those plans to a hundred percent and then put it out to bid.
Uh, somebody had mentioned something about the Army Corps of Engineers. Do they have to sign off on any of these, uh, plans about flooding?
You know, we, we've worked with the Corps on the Hazlen Road to get that permitted. They have permitted that. Uh, it took about a year of multiple studies. Um, as far as pedestrian connectivity across unnamed tributary or ditch, it depends on the design of that pedestrian crossing. Uh, if we clear-span the ditch, meaning we do not put any permanent structure in the bottom of the flowway, it does not require a permit. Uh, if we get into and start modifying the cross-section that creek, it does require a permit. So, as we move forward, it will depend, be dependent on how we design some of that multimodal pass, both in the neighborhood and in the Grissom. And, and as we get into that design, uh, next year, you know, we would determine that. But we would certainly get that permit as we did with the Hazlen Road extension that had just recently received permitting.
Separate from the, uh, from the walkways, uh, the, uh, the flood mitigation, you know, issues that you're talking about, does the Army Corps get involved in that?
Uh, we work very closely, more with, uh, USGS and Fish and Wildlife. We have stream gauges. Uh, as a matter of fact, you approve every year a fifty-fifty match where, uh, we work with USGS and, and the city to cost-share in stream gauges, uh, so during, we get real-time data during storm events. And that helps us to prioritize drainage. In our capital plan, every year, you approve about a million dollars in what we call prioritized drainage for the full city. Those stream gauges help us determine where best to spend that money and making sure that our models are up to date for our FEMA maps and, and also for our flood mitigation program.
Okay. Well, I would, I guess I have some of the, um, I guess similar to what Mr. Russell and Mr. Culver have said, you know, we're listening up here. And this is certainly going to be a, a close call. I guess I would be somewhat inclined to, uh, you know, courtesy to, uh, defer to Councilwoman Robinson's, and she's been working in this district, uh, been much more involved in this than I have, and, uh, you know, she, I guess, would know what's, what's best. It sounds like, Shane, that you're trying to make sure that, that this thing did go through, that the, uh, neighborhood flooding protection issues would be, uh, addressed.
That, that's correct. No, what we have presented tonight, uh, really has no relation to the zoning, what our staff has done. It, it's really the development of the land in general, whether it has five houses or it has five hundred houses. That process is the same, and I asked our staff to do that. We've, we've met multiple times in private, uh, to review the facts, review the data, to ensure, uh, the protection of existing neighborhoods. Uh, that's irrelevant to whatever zone you wish to declare. Uh, but the development of this will provide safe harbor for the existing neighborhoods. We, we think we've done a good job of making sure that they contain their own water. Uh, we think that the traffic situation from the current counts that we've taken versus adding the, the new homes that are proposed, and we know what the traffic count would be for those forty homes. You add that together, the current streets can certainly handle it. Uh, we are not taking away the fact that Memorial Parkway needs work. That's why we demanded with Director Cooper and, and at that time Governor Bentley to make that part of the project and, and part of Restore Roads. So, and we're working diligently on that. Uh, the Hazlen Road, uh, extension, we think is critical for this neighborhood and, and this side of the Parkway. I, I told Dr. Robinson and Mayor Battle, uh, a couple of years ago when we started working on it, this road will be the equivalent to Bailey Cove on the east side of the Parkway. And I think you will see as we move forward, as money allows, we will make more connections. But we know we can fund the, the connection from Grissom High School to Hobbs and two connections this time in the multi-use path. It's like any other part of our city, we will continue to build off that as infrastructure demands occur and funding allows. But what we've shown you tonight is what we can, uh, deliver to the community.
Madam? I guess one last thing, piggyback what you're talking about, uh, Hayes, with the Hazlen Road extension, someday, and I hope it's in our lifetime, uh, we're going to see a Southern Bypass. And that would be part of the Ring Road that connects with Rideout Road Extension, you know, uh, 565 out over to, uh, Martin Luther King, over to Hampton Cove. But someday, whenever we can get that thing done, and I'm sure the price is going to be phenomenal, I think that would help a lot with traffic flow throughout the entire city.
And the layout of the proposed Hazlen Road, we did take our Southern Bypass corridor study into account to make sure we did not cut off that project from it being built in the future. But you are correct, it will be a very, very expensive project. It will need, it will need federal help to occur.
One last question, what is the number of units, uh, well, maybe you can't really respond. I'm just trying to get an idea of the, the difference in the number of units between, um, you know, R1A and R12B?
Uh, for this particular subdivision layout, there are the same number of lots. The only difference in the two zoning is the front yard setbacks, so, that, in, in some of the side yard. But it, it has to do with the depth of lot that can be created, but it's the overall square footage, and Jim McGuffey can speak better from zoning. He and I had the discussion, uh, it's the same number of lots. Uh, but I, I think if you went back with R1A, you might lose, and maybe Mr. N-Finger, uh, we don't get into number of lots and maximizing in cost. That's, that's for the private, uh, side of the house to do. We look at the technical side, um, maybe five lots less, you know, to try to reposition houses to, to meet those side yard and front yard setbacks. But, uh, I can tell you from what we're seeing in other parts of the city, uh, and, and what the market is, is requesting, is more of that Providence McMullen Cove feel, uh, that, that seems to be where not just Huntsville, uh, but Madison and the region, and, uh, you know, we just finished our, our, uh, big picture plan, and, and we're seeing some of that, and we've done some zoning tweaks, uh, that we have not brought to you, you, that will be coming probably sometime next year to just change a, as, as the economy has changed and what the, you know, the younger generation and some of people are asking in a, in a single-family detached residence. Some of our zoning is, is perfect and is no changing. But within those documents, they may need some tweaks, uh, just meet the market demand to, to, to not only allow new housing, uh, but what you're seeing in the Blossom Wood and the Medical District where houses are because of its location, and you're seeing it in South Huntsville also, a lot of redevelopment. Randy Cunningham in Inspection Department routinely review permits, where you're seeing people buy a lot because it's a great neighborhood and tearing that house down and putting a different style house there. And, and we're going to have to adjust some interior zoning, not create new zones, but kind of tweak those a little bit because, you know, the market is changing some. And, and we want vibrant neighborhoods, we don't want a stiff zoning that doesn't allow what the market's demanding and, and you don't just see redevelopment or reinvestment in those neighborhoods. That would not be good stores of the government to, uh, the taxpayer who's made that investment in that neighborhood.
If I may?
Mr. Keith?
Thank you. One quick question, because I, I was actually going to ask that. So, as I understand it, no matter what, if it was R1A, we would still have the same mitigation issues, Beaver issues, the forty-home plot, if it was R1A or R2A, I mean, R2B or whatever it was, we would still have the same issues, and we would be here discussing the things that the city probably needs to do a better job of, correct?
Yeah, so, so you're exactly right. We, we would require the same test for any subdivision to go through and, and meet our test for retention, access points, and the like. That, that comes through every month through planning, zoning, traffic engineering, engineering. To, to answer your, your point, what I would assume would happen, if, if it was R1A and Mr. N-Finger decided to keep the lot layout exactly the way he's, he's laid the lots out and couldn't get the setbacks, a smaller house would be built in, in R1A.
And I guess I want to say that to, uh, Councilman Russell, of which I agree philosophically. Uh, but pragmatically, we are here to talk about zoning in the sense that, you know, equality is not equity. There are going to be something, there's actually something coming in my district, of which I know there'll be a room full of people who disagree. But the injection and change in the zoning and the investment we're going to make will probably be better for the whole of the area. And I imagine, again, this is speculation, as this development, if passed, sits behind, well, a new school, if I'm correct, the individuals moving into this area would probably fit the congruency of the individuals who live there, who seem like wonderful, amazing people of Huntsville. And I would just sort of push you all to consider that, you know, sometimes we don't make everybody happy and that every perspective of equality doing everything in my district is the same I would do in your district, doesn't necessarily work in every instance. And it is a tough decision of which people will get mad, and I understand. But objectively, we are here to talk about a zoning which will allow development and not the surrounding variables of which we are using in speculation. And I know that it's tough to, for us to sit, but that's sort of the reason that we got elected.
One final question, please.
Mr. Kling?
Uh, Shane, and I'll let you yield to Mr. N-Finger if you want. Can you give a ballpark estimate, not necessarily about this development, but just with the size that's been talked about? You've mentioned about twenty-eight hundred square feet houses or whatever, but a ballpark estimate as far as what a house would, like this would cost, whether R1A, R2B, whatever, but...
I would defer that to, to the developer.
Mr. N-Finger, could you answer that question, please? What is the average, let's also, average size of the house, average cost, average, average price point on those houses?
The zoning will affect the number of units. Uh, the zoning only affects the setback in the front yard and the side yard, so it doesn't affect the number of units. This is a low-density development. It's designed to be a, uh, relatively high-priced homes. They'll be from, uh, three twenty-five to four hundred and fifty will be the standard price, but it may go up to five fifty. It's a, you know, we're, it's seven acres of lakes and a, and a one-mile walking trail. As I've said, it's less than one unit per acre. And so, the, the zoning that we're requesting doesn't affect density, and I would challenge Councilman Russell- Russell to rethink his position in that it, we're not talking about changing the usage or density, we're only talking about setbacks on the front yard.
Any other questions or comments from council? And then I'll make my comments. I applaud all of you for being here. You are probably the best organized neighborhood association we have ever come to speak to us, the presentations that you give, and while my fellow council members only heard all of this tonight, I've been hearing it for the last couple of months. I have spent a lot of time with many of you before that. I've put on rubber boots and walked through swamps and looked at Beaver dams. I have met with the folks in Tamara to talk about drainage issues and walk through, and the city even now is finishing design on a project that will help mitigate that. We've worked with the Jackson Bend Neighborhood Association to do the project back there. It took months to make that happen, and we worked through to make that happen. Since this project was introduced, we have spent time meeting and talking through the issues. And quite frankly, any other R2 rezoning in that area, I would oppose it, would be totally inappropriate to put multifamily housing there, any kind of project, no matter how much it was, because it would not fit with the character of the neighborhood. And that's what we need to look at. The Grissom High School has been described as a game changer for South Huntsville, and that means it's going to drive development, and it's going to change the face of South Huntsville, particularly on the west side of the Parkway. If we are going to control that development, we need to set the bar, and we need to set the bar high. And I believe this development does that. Because that R2 carries with it, and this is the only way I think we would consider approving it, is with those plat restrictions, to review them again. The single-family homes with that very specific area size and width ensures that the kind of homes that we want to go in there are going to go in there. Mr. Enfinger has plans, again, showing homes that are averaged 3,000 square feet, 350 to 450. Those plans can be seen in his office, and I'm just wondering how many, I have offered to you that you can go and see them. I don't know if anybody has taken him up on that or not. Go look at those plans in his office. It's going to be a neighborhood that establishes the kind of developments we want to see going in around Grissom High School. It also answers the question of connectivity. When we first started talking about the Hazlen Road extension, the Whitesburg Estates Neighborhood Association was one of the first groups I talked to about that, and this was a couple of years ago. And we talked about connector roads, and there was a lot of pushback about those connector roads. We don't want connector roads into our neighborhood. Well, we're hearing something very different now. In fact, you have a great petition out there. Probably the best thing that has come out of this conversation is that you do want connectivity to Hazlen Road, and this subdivision provides the very first access to Hazlen Road. So it begins to really start to open up that Grissom High School area for development. I think it's a good project. However, it has raised significant concerns, as I think Councilman Kling indicated earlier, concerns about flooding and drainage. We've been working them, again, with the Jackson Bend project, with the Tamara project. But Mr. Davis, and I think this question is asked, but I'll ask it again, if our best estimates, because water tends to go where water wants to go, as Marty Calvert has told me, on more than one occasion, if water wants to go someplace we don't think it's going to go, are we going to be there to handle it?
Yes, Madam President, and again, I want to point out, Kathy Martin pointed out very early in this conversation, we help and assist with our modeling setting what we call finished floor elevation for lots and setting pool elevations for all retention ponds. That's our job, is to check those calculations and challenge those calculations to set weir elevations such that this whole area from Hobbs North residentially, Marty Calvert has been with the city over 30 years, he lives in this area of town, so he's very passionate to make sure that not only is this area town, but he, himself, is protected. Gary Gleason, our hydrologist, lives off Hobbs Road, so we're very familiar with this area and the drainage, such that we have made development occur with elevation set such that we know that the backwater of the Tennessee River controls a lot of this drainage, and we're limited at times what we can and cannot make that do. But, and knowing that, early on, many years ago, Marty Calvert, now Kathy Martin, and Gary Gleason and myself, as the baton has been passed, we've used that historic knowledge to set finished floor elevations, retention pond elevations, such that a major flood in the backwater of the Tennessee River would push onto Redstone Arsenal and not into the community. And we'll continue to provide that support and do everything we can to protect our citizens. That's what they pass to do, is to protect them.
That has been one of the main concerns. The other main concern has been traffic, and it sounds like we have improvements in place at the Cohaba and Mythwood intersection. Again, these were issues that didn't, that were never raised until this subdivision came in, so while they are not directly related to the subdivision, they have been sort of one of, the reverberations have been there, and we are going to work at that curve, that blind curve, to improve it and make it safer. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
In addition to that, as we make improvements on the South Parkway, we will look at the Mythwood, we've already talked, I think, about a year ago about changing that Mythwood light.
Yes, and as I said, as we continue work at Memorial Parkway, there will be several opportunities for the community to provide input, both to the city and Alda, when we reach that stage, and probably early next year when we advertise, it'll be well-publicized with the news media, and much time will be given to prepare for that so that citizens can prepare to come out to that event.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. My last question, my last question is for Mr. Riley, and I think also for our Planning Department. It has been suggested that Mr. Enfinger has done everything he is legally required to do in regards to meeting the criteria for R2, including the plat restrictions. Is there anything you see in this development that would suggest that what he's doing does not meet those requirements?
I'm unaware of anything, and certainly the Planning Department works daily with these regulations and has a strong working knowledge of them, and I would certainly concede to them as well.
Thank you. Then I would ask that if this zoning is in fact approved, that the city continue to be aware of concerns about drainage, about traffic, and various other issues that have been mentioned, and also work with the neighborhood associations regarding these detention ponds. That was really an excellent point that was raised. We put a lot of responsibility on homeowners association there. I guess I wasn't aware until the Jackson Bend folks shared with me how expensive it is to maintain those ponds and how labor-intensive it is. I'm not sure what assistance we can give, but if there's anything we can do to help with that or certainly be aware of that issue, I would be very grateful. Are there any other comments? Prepare for the vote. All in favor of approving this ordinance or this rezoning, please indicate by saying aye. Are there any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Let the record show that Mr. Russell is opposed. The motion carries.
Say we move for recess? No, we don't want recess.
We will move on to, would you all like to take a break before we move on? I'm hearing a yes from Mr. Russell and a no from Mr. Kling.
I'd say we have a two-minute recess to let them all leave.
Okay, two-minute recess. Oh, again, we need to change the paper over here. You're going to have to take a five-minute recess to change the paper. Five minutes, eight oh four. Come back to order, please. We are back in chambers. And we will move on with public hearings because that was so much fun. 6A2, now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-410, zoning 79.86 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Indian Ridge Drive and east of Ditto Landing Parkway to Residence 2 District, set June 8, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This is newly annexed property. This property was annexed back in April 2017. This property is approximately 79.86 acres. This property is located on the east of Ditto Landing Parkway and on the north side of Indian Ridge Drive, north of the Indian Ridge subdivision. The proposed zoning designation is Residence 2 District for this property. This will be a proposed single-family detached subdivision, and this property has no plat restrictions.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this rezoning? Is there anyone here who wishes to comment? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Culver, second by the chair. Discussion. Should note that this is also, I think, another development from Mr. Enfinger, and he's asking for Residence 2.
Yes, it's just a straight R2 zoning designation. Also, as you can see on the map, he has areas that are within the slope development district, and he would have to adhere to those regulations. He has not submitted a subdivision layout for this property just yet.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A3, public hearing on ordinance number 17-412, zoning .99 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Kennedy Lane and east of Old Big Cove Road to Residence 1B District, set June 8, 2017, and regular council meeting.
This property is also newly annexed land. This was also annexed back in April 2017. This is currently a single-family detached dwelling, .99 acre. This property owner wanted to annex for city services and is now being zoned. The proposed zoning designation is Residence 1B, which is consistent with the adjacent homes on Kennedy Lane, which have all annexed into the city limits in 2017.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this ordinance? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Is there any comments or discussion? All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A4 is a public hearing on ordinance number 17-414, zoning 14.22 acres of newly annexed property lying on north side of Viewford Drive and west of Old Pig Grove Road to Residence 1B District, set at June 8, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This is also newly annexed property. It's approximately 14.22 acres. This property will be in addition to the existing Overton subdivision, which is also zoned Residence 1B, so that is the proposed zoning designation for this particular property, Residence 1B.
Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this ordinance? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
I move to approve the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Keith, I believe. Is there, are there any comments? All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A5 is a public hearing for Tiffany Bradley Lancaster and Anthony Lancaster, doing business as Kitty Cab LLC. This was set at the July 13, 2017, regular council meeting. Mr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am. This is a new company. It's sort of a unique niche in Huntsville. I don't think we have anybody doing this just yet. They're proposing to provide transportation to help families, particularly with kids that need to get to activities and sporting events and after-school things such as that. They're planning on starting with one vehicle, one van. Everything's been done as far as the background checks go, and it's in order for your consideration.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment regarding this item? Anyone wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Culver. Are there any questions with regard to this?
What is our commitment to it?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't...
What was our commitment to it? The, what is our, the commitment from the city to it?
The commitment.
Essentially, what we're doing is we're, our responsibility is to do the background checks, certify that everything's in order, to grant a certificate of public need and necessity, which is a state requirement to use the public roads for profit. So what the council does in this vote is give them that certificate of need and necessity, which authorizes them to operate their business. Then they'd have to go get a permit, just like every other business does. It's a little unique because they're specifically using the streets for their business.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I do, I have a question. I just, I can't even imagine the liability issues that this raises with children. So you said that background checks have been done on the individuals on, who are applying, Mr. and Ms. Lancaster.
Correct.
I'm assuming they're going to be the drivers, and that, but if additional drivers are used, are we going to do background checks with them? What the nature of those background, how extensive those background checks would be?
May I defer your question to Ms. ...
Are you Ms. Lancaster? Please identify yourself.
So we are going to hire drivers. They're only going to be female drivers because the slogan is "For Moms, Buy Moms." And when your child is picked up from school or an after-school activity, what we do is we would text the parent, let them know, you know, Andy has been picked up, and then you can watch them ride. It's live streaming services in the van. So we will have, obviously, insurance, and that's probably the most costly thing for the company, but for the most part, parents will be able to watch their kids ride. I'm trying to make it as comfortable for parents as possible, because I'm a parent myself, and I think if they are able to see their kids go to their destination, they'll feel more comfortable with it.
Is this a franchise?
No, it's just an idea I got from a bigger city.
It's a fabulous idea, and you will probably make a ton of money off of this. There are lots of people who will take advantage of it. You know, I just wanted to make sure we were covered in terms of, that y'all were covered in terms of liability. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
6A6, public hearing on a resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 3808 Meridian Street Northeast, Huntsville, Alabama. This is brought to us by Community Development. Ms. Jordan.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Robinson. Counsel, I'm asking that you authorize the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 3808 Meridian Street Northeast, under the Code of Alabama 114030. You're looking at pictures of this property now. This property was cited on May 12, 2017, as a public nuisance by Community Development staff, and the owners were issued a notice to demolish the structure. The property was inspected by an independent contractor, and they found the structure is not economically feasible to repair. This property rated in 86. A rating of 50 or greater is considered not to be feasible for rehab. The notice, photos, and the evaluation of this property are included in your packet tonight. As a result of this information, it's my recommendation that the City Council declare these conditions to be a public nuisance and that you order the structure be demolished.
Ms. Jordan, is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this resolution? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, my name is Allo. Hello? Okay. My name is Samuel Oyekenu.
Could you spell your last name for us, just for the record?
O-Y-E-K-E-N-U.
Thank you.
I bought this house...
And your address, sir?
3808 Meridian Street.
Thank you.
I bought this house as a student.
Your residence address, 808...
3808.
This is your house, where you live?
That's not where I live.
Where do you live?
Oh, I live in Birmingham.
Pardon?
I'm all the way from Birmingham.
Your address in Birmingham, please. What is your address in Birmingham?
I have two residents.
Just give us one.
I'll just give you one. One, 40 Valleydale Road, Monfort, Alabama. That's where my marriage goes to.
Repeat it one more time, please.
Madam President, maybe we could get somebody to write it down.
Okay, yes.
40 Valleydale Road.
14 Valleydale Road.
Yes, Monfort, Alabama.
On Fort Alabama.
36268.
Thank you. Thank you. Please make your comments.
For my son, you see that whole day, somebody broke into the house, destroyed... You see that hole there? Somebody broke into the house, destroyed it, and every time I'm trying to do something there, somebody will write something on it, just quit something. They would just write all kinds of stuff on it there. They intentionally didn't want me to finish fixing this house. They are talking about the face right there. That had already been covered. The back has not been done yet. Excuse me. The back has not been done yet, but we are planning on fixing this house and bringing it to code. That was why I got this building permit. As you can see, I have two building permits here. The part they are showing right there, that's true. There's a hole in the roof because they broke into the roof. I think they intentionally tried to damage the house so that they can buy it. That was... that was probably what I think they are doing, or they are doing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment with regard to this item? Oh, Ms. Reed?
If you tear it down, how much does it cost to tear this down to the city? If you... if you want to tear it down, what's the cost of tearing it down and demolishing it?
Are there any other questions? Let's capture all your questions. Is that your only question?
Did you... do you own it or want to own it, or...
Ms. Reed, your comments need to be...
You need to talk to them and ask for thirty-day extension, if you can do it.
Ms. Reed, thank you.
I'm through. Thank you.
How much will it cost to tear it down?
We won't know until, you know, the actual demolition takes place. We'll bring that cost back to you and ask that you assess it to the property owner.
Is there an average cost for demolishing buildings? Depends on the building, depends on how big it is, depends on whatever issues you're running to. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment?
Sure.
Yes, sir?
Yeah. I'll donate time and labor if you're trying to save your house. If the city will give them an extension, if you ask for an extension, I'd be happy to, if it's sentimental and...
Oh, sir, we need your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Kevin Weil, one thirteen, Fourth and Lawrence.
Thank you.
Sorry. Apologies. But, yeah, I'll donate time and labor and lumber if you need it. So, if you get an extension, you know...
Sir, this is a conversation. The two of you can have others. Do you have any comments for the council? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion from the council?
Move to approve.
Motion from Mr. Russell. Was that a second from you, Ms....
Second.
Second from Mr. Keith? Thank you. Comments?
I'd like to propose an amendment to Mr. Russell's motion that the Director of Community Development be given the latitude, if she sees fit, to take any order by the City Council concerning the demolition of this house, and to hold back if she thinks that there is a good-faith effort being made by the gentleman within a period of time that she sees fit. Let me restate that. Okay. Let me restate this. The amendment would be to give the Director of Community Development the authority to delay implementation of the City Council a motion, if she sees fit, in her professional judgment.
Can I comment on that?
Okay.
There is a motion to amend. Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, the motion fails.
Okay. Since... do I still have the floor?
Yes, the floor is yours, Mr. Kling.
Okay. My thinking was, we've done this in other cases on circumstances pertaining to community development, and also delinquent license payments or tax payments by the Finance Department. The idea is that the council goes ahead and gives movement, but at the same time, we would give the authority to the respective department head if he or she sees evidence of a good-faith effort being made to correct, whether it's delayed payments in the case of the Finance, or in the case of community development, where if somebody is making a good-faith effort to take the corrective action that's needed, to give this gentleman a fair shot.
So, I guess the question, Ms. Jordan, is if the council were to approve your going forward with the demolition, and you see a good-faith effort being made to improve the home, to deal with the safety issues, can that decision be reversed or stayed? Have you ever done that before?
I haven't. I think what you're trying to get at is, you know, if you want to give an extension, if that's something you want to consider, I would definitely put a date for a CO to be attached to, you know, any kind of extension. Otherwise, I think it would be arbitrary of me to, you know, say, "It looks like progress has been made." We went out and inspected the property today. We took fifty-five pictures. It does not look much different than these photos. And I have the photos. I did share them with Councilman Russell, because this is in his district. There has been some exterior work done, but no work done on the interior of the home. We've been dealing with this house for nine years, and this is the gateway, you know, not only to downtown, but to Alabama A&amp;M University. It's right on Meridian. There are two property owners that are... there are two homes that are owner-occupied, right next to this house. Those neighbors, you know, have lived with this property for quite some time, being at different states of disrepair, and as you see it today. And this is our recommendation, but we'll, of course, do whatever you direct us to do.
Mr. Keith?
If I may, Madam President, two things. If we could ask Ms. Jordan to speak to the score that she spoke about and the independent contractor, because there would have to be a number of which she would consider reasonable effort. That probably would take a lot of time, though I understand the citizen offered to help. That would take a considerable amount of economic investment as well. And if she could just speak to that point about the score, I think that is important to the council.
And that was a question I was going to ask as well. So, in eighty-six, out of...
Out of one hundred.
Out of one hundred, when normally fifty makes it uninhabitable and unreparable, and you're at eighty-six, can this house be saved?
You know, with a lot of resources, you know, put into it, it absolutely can. But what our independent contractor noted was that all of the interior floors, walls, and ceilings needed to be replaced. All of the utility systems, the electrical, heating, and plumbing needed to be replaced. All of the window and door units need to be replaced. Eighty percent of the framing needs to be replaced, and eighty percent of the roof. So, it scored in eighty-six, and as I said, fifty or more. So, we really don't bring you anything unless it's a seventy-five.
And in its current condition, what... it presents not only an eyesore, but it is a safety hazard, I would think, to that neighborhood.
It was open today, and that's how my inspectors were able to access the interior. There were no doors on it today. The grass was overgrown. He did cut the grass this afternoon, you know, and so I appreciate that, and I'm sure the neighbors do as well. But it was open and unsecure today at about ten a.m.
So, the opportunity for a good-faith effort has been there, and it has not been honored.
That's correct.
Madam President, as you all know, I represent the Edmonton Heights neighborhood in North Huntsville, and quite frequently go to the meetings. And that neighborhood feels, sometimes I don't represent them very well, they feel that the city does not treat them the same. That when we have community development issues, my colleagues want to delay and delay and delay, and it took eight, nine years to get to this house, and they don't understand. They think we would never do that in some of the other neighborhoods I represent. So, I am all for tearing this down. I'm sorry this gentleman's having this problem, but it's eight, nine years. It's been way too long. And that neighborhood is a beautiful neighborhood, but we need to do our part. The city needs to do our part and enforce our laws, and then it will come back on its own. And so, I'm real conscious of this, and I'm real conscious of the vote tonight, that we treat them the same we would treat the neighborhoods that we represent. So, I urge you to approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mayor Battle, did you have a comment?
I'd just... I'd like to echo Councilman Russell's comments. I mean, there's two people living next door to this. They have lived next door to this for years and years and years. This has not been taken care of. You can see from the pictures that are up there. The grass was high this morning. It finally got cut this afternoon, was about to get another grass citation on it. You know, it's not fair to the people who live next door to have to put up with something like this right next door to them. And I agree with Councilman Russell that we need to have a good neighbor policy. This is part of your good neighbor policy, that you don't allow your properties to get like this.
Thank you. Mayor Battle, or is there anyone else who has a comment? All in favor, please indicate... of approving the resolution, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. 6A6, public hearing... sir, the public hearing is over. 6A6, public hearing on a resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public... no, I'm sorry. 6A7, public hearing on a resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at twenty-four oh three Huntsville Street Northwest, Huntsville, Alabama, from Community Development. Ms. Jordan?
Yes. Dr. Robinson, counsel, I'm asking that you also authorize the demolition of this unsafe building located at twenty-four oh three Huntsville Street Northeast. This is also in Councilman Russell's district. It's off of Meridian, in the neighborhood to the west of Lee High School. This property was cited on May ninth, two thousand seventeen, as a public nuisance by Community Development staff. The owners were issued a notice to demolish the structure. It was also inspected by an independent contractor, and it scored one hundred. So, every part of the home has to be replaced. It did suffer a fire, and so as a result, it's before you tonight for your approval to demolish the structure.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? The public hearing is now closed.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Keith. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 6A8 is a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the City Clerk Treasurer to assess the cost of draining and filling in the swimming pool located at twenty-nine six-one-one, Laura Ridge Drive Northwest, Harvest, Alabama, three-five-seven-four-nine.
Yes. Dr. Robinson, counsel, on April thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, you authorized the removal of the public nuisance located at twenty-nine six-eleven Laura Ridge Drive Northwest. You might remember there was an abandoned swimming pool on that property. The home caught on fire. The house was removed. The swimming pool remained. This pool was drained and filled on May second, and it eliminated the nuisance. The cost for the abatement was one thousand six hundred forty-two dollars, and we're asking for your approval to assess this cost to the property owner.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment? Anyone wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Motion from Mr. Culver.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Any questions or comments?
Just question for clarification. I'm assuming the Harvest address is the mailing address, but it is actually physically within the city limits.
That's correct, yes.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A9 is... now is the time and place for a public hearing to appeal the decision of the Liquor License Review Committee on the issuance of a retail beer and wine license to Northside Store, Inc., located at fifty-one sixty Blue Spring Road, Huntsville, Alabama. This was set at the July thirteenth, regular council meeting. Mr. McGuffey?
Council members, this is an approved beer and wine license at a gas station at the intersection of Blue Spring and Winchester. It's an existing gas station that's been there for many years. The Liquor Review Committee approved this license, and there was a gentleman in the audience that wanted to appeal the decision, which is why it's before you this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone wishing to comment? The public hearing is now closed. Motion...
Madam President, what is the proper motion for this?
I was just going to say, so to clarify, we are appealing the decision. So, Mr. Riley, you may help us here. This would require a motion to overturn the decision of the Liquor License Review Committee. Is that what we're looking for?
Actually, I think the proper motion would be a motion to approve the liquor license application.
Okay. A motion to... would someone like to make a motion to approve the decision of the Liquor License Review Committee?
I most...
A motion from Mr. Keith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion?
Just to clarify, the appeal that was made by the individual, can you just give some clarity to it?
Sure. On June first, the gas station at this intersection, it's the southeast corner, it's held a license for at least fifteen years. The previous owner had changed management and ownership, and the License Review Committee was there to approve the new owner, and with that requires a notification to everybody within five hundred feet. And the gentleman within five hundred feet came to express some of his concerns with the gas station, and that's why he decided to appeal it. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight.
Thank you.
So, I hear you say that it is outside of the five hundred... the church is outside of the five hundred foot?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they indicated in the little letter or note that they wrote that they are across the street.
There's one across the street. There's one down the street. The church is newer or is a newer user than the gas station. The gas station predates the church.
So, even though they are across the street and within five hundred feet, because they are new, that it doesn't count?
Right. The use predates the new user, so it wouldn't be fair for the old user to be punished.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
All in favor of approving the motion, please indicate. Any opposed? The motion carries. We have no public hearings to be set. We will move on to communications from the public. When your name is read, please come to the microphone. Give us your name, your address, and you will have three minutes to address the council. I suspect a number of these folks who had signed up are no longer here, but I will check anyway. Mr. Tim Payment regarding connectivity, I believe he's left. Ben Payment, similarly, connectivity. Susan Leighton has left. Elizabeth Halloran has left. Catherine Halloran has left. Catherine Preke has left. Donna Costalano, is Donna Costalano still here?
I believe she left, Madam President.
Donna Costalano left. Ammon Martin regarding the annex. This may go quicker than we thought. Jackie Reed, government issues. Ms. Reed is with us.
You mean all them people left, and I didn't leave? That's amazing. I have to stay here and see what really goes on. Anyway, thanks for allowing public input, and Jackie Reed, you know where I live, on Jack Coleman. And one thing I want to ask you, they're tearing up the corners in the streets over there and putting little orange ribbons going down the street. Is it true, and have you all started, going to turn Holmes Avenue into a bike path? Is that what that stuff's all about? Does anybody know? Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars you passed up there one night to do some bicycles from Holmes Avenue all the way past my house to UAH. I'm trying to move before that happens. I'm trying to move back in Kling's district. I promise you, before that happens, I'm getting out of there. I pulled out of Jack Coleman the other day, pulled out in the street, and the man was way down the street. He ran around me on another street doing sixty miles an hour going over Holmes Avenue. That'll be great for bicycles on that street. Mayor Battle, I don't think Huntsville, Alabama is a bicycle city. Now, you're not driving around town like I am every day. If you did, you'd change your mind. These people are speeding. Don't turn that light on yet. I'm not through.
You still have two minutes.
Who's in charge of the lights?
Reed, you have two minutes. Please finish your comments.
Is my time up?
Two minutes, Ms. Reed.
I feel sorry for you at the end of the meeting, then. But anyway, the people are speeding and running over you and doing all kinds of things. I want you to hold on this agenda tonight, fourteen a.m., and definitely, that's a new city annex, new city in Met Hall. I want to hear all about that, because I'm against it. I think it's AI, AE, AE. Please hold it and explain it, and let me see what you have on your mind, if there's any common sense in there whatsoever. I'm still saying, now I see Mid-City's going to have a big place out there for concerts. Why did you not give the coke plant to the Von Ron City Center, let them build a convention center, keep it downtown? You want competition out there with your big-money boys, which you're going to give it to them. I want for you to come up... who could I talk to about what you're paying to tear that mall down out there? What you're paying to have this property developed over here, these seven acres, that you're going to develop for the man and tear down these buildings? I want to know who in this city would know the price of all of that stuff, because I'm fixing to figure up on your budget. We didn't have a mid... we didn't have a mid-budget hearing this year. I hadn't heard a word about it. So, when did you all pull that, and when did you do that? I hadn't heard a word about it. Government sure has changed in the last ten years. I've been coming thirty years. We had work sessions. We had budget hearings. I've been coming thirty years, we had work sessions, we had budget hearings. You never hear anything about this stuff anymore. When do y'all make all these deals and do all this stuff? I'm concerned, I think City Hall needs major changes in the overhaul. And I'm out to help do it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reed. I believe there are two questions, one regarding the Holmes Avenue plan and one regarding the budget process. Mr. Davis, would you like to share plans for Holmes Avenue?
Madam President, I'd be happy to. So we're at the very, very initial stages. You'll see more once you hopefully pass the capital plan for next year, you'll see some budget items for Holmes Avenue corridor improvements. And should you approve that in the capital plan we bring before you, certainly we will begin the design and public involvement, again, just like we do any road. So public can comment on what the cross-section, what amenities would be in that, that, that road improvement project. And then ultimately, you would need to fund that in that capital plan. As far as just the general capital plan, Ms. Reed talked about some things that are private developers' costs that we don't monitor. We don't have a legal right to do that. If they want to voluntarily share what their investment is, that's certainly doable. But if anyone wishes to see what we've spent on roads and utilities, any part of the city, whether it be downtown for city center or mid-city, or, or just put a turn lane in, you know, to assist a subdivision in South Huntsville like we talked about tonight, or Hampton Cove. I would check with myself or Kathy Martin, the engineering department, and we, we're happy to provide that to any citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And then I think she asked more general question about the budget process and when that's going to be coming to us.
Mayor may want to speak on it, but, you know, typically, council members, we will have some budget hearings prior to, you know, presenting a preliminary budget, as Mayor Battle always has done, and roll that out. But I would let Mayor Battle speak to that.
Also, Ms. Reed, I think asked about mid-year review. We went through a mid-year review with council and we were right on budget. Our expenditures were about where they needed to be, our revenues were just at the same place. I think this was a month ago, I believe that we, we addressed council with it. There wasn't enough, big enough movement to do anything, make anything special, it looked like we were on track for where we needed to be.
Thank you. That's great information for the public as a whole to know that we're going to be looking at the budget here soon and, and we look forward to that process. The next person to sign up is Zachary Magnum. Is Mr. Magnum still here? Lost Mr. Magnum? Doug Beard, McThorne, regarding McThorne More Acres historic status.
Two things I wanted to address.
Mr. Beard, please give us your name and address.
Doug Beard, nine oh three Speak Road, McThorne More Acres, west.
Just speaking, speaking to the microphones, pull it up.
Doug Beard, nine oh three Speak Road, McThorne More Acres. I had two things I wanted to address. One of them pertains to item fifteen AG, so I don't know if I should comment on that now or save that for the, um, I wanted to address, hold on, let me see, give me, let me get my notes out. Don't mind.
You have, you have three minutes, Mr. Beard.
I understand. I think, I, I'm standing in for our neighborhood coordinator. I know, I know it's been a long night, as I'm sure you've seen. I'm standing in for my neighborhood coordinator and I wanted to applaud the effort that the city is making towards recognizing the historic contribution that Huntsville has made. I think the city is waking up to the fact that the twentieth century is part of history, just like every century before it, maybe even more important. And so I wanted to applaud the city in pushing to make McThorne More Acres, to get that added to the National Register of Historic Places. And I would like to ask you to continue that effort, to recognize the contribution that neighborhoods like McThorne More Acres and others have made to history. And I know it's hard to think of the fifties and sixties as history, but they're an integral part of the history of this country, the same as the Victorian era. And that's, I'm sorry, I know I'm rambling, but I know we want to get out of here, it's been a long night. And I also wanted to address Mrs. Reed's comment. I pay an extra cent of sales tax that's going towards widening the roads that go to Madison, that go to Meridianville, that go to Governor, that go to Gunnersville. I, I would like to just have a small portion of those funds dedicated, I cycle in Huntsville, and I would like to see a well-rounded transportation infrastructure in Huntsville. And the cost of making Holmes Avenue a bicycle corridor is very little in comparison to five sixty-five, Highway seventy-two, Highway four thirty-one, Highway two thirty-one. I don't think that's a lot to ask, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for being with us, Mr. Beard.
Thank you.
That concludes communications from the public. We will move on to item number eight, Huntsville Utility Items. Eight A is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase materials and contract services to replace cast iron gas mains.
Move to approve.
Motion from Mr. Russell. Second by Mr. Keith. Mr. Whitley, would you please give us some information about this?
Yes, good evening, Dr. Robinson, thank you. This item, council members, is before you for seven point, almost little over seven million dollars to complete the cast iron replacement work of our natural gas system. About twenty-seven miles left remaining from the nineteen fifties and sixties. We've been working since the nineteen eighties to change all of these cast iron pipes out, and this project will allow us to do that.
Questions, council members? Mr. Keith?
Mr. Whitley, quick question. Where would this be, probably the first part of this exchange be?
Yes, so this total project is roughly twenty-seven miles throughout the entire system. Some of these areas include Oakwood and Pulaski, Jordan Lane, between university and five sixty-five, all throughout our service area.
Thank you so much. And so when you do strip up, and if you could just give like a short, sort of summation, you'll be going down, you know, I don't know, six feet, four feet, whatever it is where the line is. So you'd be tearing up the road, there would have to be us come behind you and then re-strip the road, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir. So we've been working in collaboration with Public Works on this project. So as we go through areas to replace this cast iron and install the, the new pipe, we're in partnership with Public Works so that the repaving will happen simultaneously.
Young man, we, we could probably do a ribbon cutting, if you say Oakwood's getting repaved, young man. And hats off to everybody I've been bugging. This is just a long time coming, to say the least. The board over there, everybody in the office at Huntsville Utilities, as well as Chris. I just thank you guys for your patience, but this is a wonderful, wonderful thing for District One, you, you guys don't even know, so, thank you.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Whitley? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Whitley.
Thank you.
Be nice to get those cast iron pipes done finally, right? Item number nine, board appointments. We have no board appointments to be voted on, but we do have board nominations. Nine B one is the nomination of John Johnson for appointment to the Von Braun Center Board of Control, seat four, for a term to expire August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. That nomination is from Mr. Kling. Nine B two is the nomination of Dr. William H. Solins for reappointment to the Von Braun Center Board of Control, seat five, for a term to expire August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. That nomination is from the chair. Are there any other nominations anyone would like to make at this time? Thank you. With that, we will move on to item number ten, approval of expenditures, Finance Committee report, a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling, do you have that report for us?
Yes, Madam President. Move for payment vouchers in the amount of eleven million, two hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Are there any questions for Mr. Kling? Regarding the finance report? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Kling, do you have anything to add?
No, Madam President, thank you.
Brings us to communications from the mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As, it was kind of interesting as Mr. Beard was talking about the nineteen fifties and sixties are history. Made me kind of think I'm still, I'm history now, so, thank you so much for the comments there. And to Ms. Reed, who, who said that she was, she wanted to talk about AE because she was against it. This is a resolution that we haven't even put out, nobody knows anything about yet, so let's, let's give it a little chance before we get started being against it or for it. Let's, let's explain it first and we'll, we'll do that tonight. I think we have one intern left tonight. Thank you, if you'll please stand, this is one of our interns for the city. We have had a great group of interns for the city of Huntsville this year, this summer, and now summer's starting to come to an end. And I think next week, next Friday is the last, last date for some of our interns, some of our others are already leaving this week. So it has been a great experience for us, we learn from them and, and hopefully they also learn from us. Also, tonight, we had the graduation for the first cyber camp in Huntsville at the Space and Rocket Center. I think you're gonna find that that is going to be an annual event where we have, just like we have space camp, we have cyber camp. We are the site of the National Cyber Symposium, and I think that's gonna be something that, that adds to workforce and teaches us all some lessons that we need to learn in the cyber world. But also, it will give us workforce for a whole industry that will take, that will take us to the next, next level. And will continue to be an industry for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. So that's something very exciting in our, in our community. Saturday is our Community Awareness for Youth event at the JC Building from ten to two, and they'll have a school backpack giveaway. And remember, schools are starting next week. Concert in the parks at six thirty, featuring Donnie Cox tomorrow. And of course, school starts tomorrow, Tuesday, August second. Be mindful of the school zones, everybody, please be careful and be mindful of school zones. And we also have a back-to-school parade Saturday, August fifth, at Jimmison High. And I believe it starts on Blue Springs and goes to Jimmison High. We'll be in there with the city's fire truck, nineteen twenty-eight fire truck. If any of the council members would like to ride with us, you're more than welcome to. And then also, congratulations to the Huntsville-Madison County Chamber of Commerce on receiving Chamber of the Year by the Association of the Chamber of Commerce Executives in, this year. So it's a great honor to have our chamber honored in that way. They've done a great job, we've known year by year that they are the number one, the number one chamber. But it's a little secret that we didn't want to let out, but now it's let out throughout the nation, so it's a great thing for the chamber and congratulations to the chamber. And finally, Ms. Reed, Harrison and I went today and got a picture of Jefferson Street, I think a couple of months ago. You were talking about it and said that we would never be able to get two cars up there. Here's the two lanes right here, and I just wanted to bring it to you and I'll give it to you a little bit later, but thank you for your questions. We double-checked before we got it paved to make sure that two cars could, could get through, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We will move on to communications from council. Mr. Culver, could we begin with you?
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor, I want to say I hung out with Madison, our intern, and Ms. Polisak early this morning over in Knox Creekwood Park and the Indian Creek Greenway. And so, and I want to say this, Mayor, she is so talented, multi-talented, she actually walked nearly the length of the greenway from the park backwards while filming Ms. Polisak and myself. So that's a great event to show off our parks. I want the general public to know that it, it doesn't matter where you live, we want to have parks in proximity to your neighborhoods. And we're doing a great job with it. And those parks, I promise you, are a great place to relax and just enjoy, take advantage of the great things that Huntsville, Alabama, Madison County, and the city of Madison has to offer. Thank you. Also, just a very quick note, we are having a town hall meeting, I believe this is the third, I think, for this year, or fourth, I don't remember. We're having it at the Old Cobblestone, which is off of the west end of Highway twenty, Old Highway twenty. So the exact address is eighty-six forty-eight Stone, Stonewalk, which is in the city limits of Huntsville, Alabama. We will host that town hall meeting on Monday, August the seventh, starting at six thirty, and we'll be finished and out of there by eight o'clock. And we are sticklers for the time in terms of finishing up. So some of the concerns that have been expressed, schools, the distance from schools and, and some of the ratings. We're gonna look at congestion on Old Highway twenty and County Line Road. I think one request, request is maybe for a turn lane, but we'll discuss that more in depthly because traffic going east on Old Highway twenty cannot turn right if somebody is waiting to turn left. So that creates a concern. Also, public safety is an issue, more police officers in that area. And of course, the water and sewer cost, that's an issue because they're getting their water through Limestone County. The conditions and the repair of the grass, the shrubs, the sidewalk, and the irrigation system that belonged to Old Cobblestone. Mayor, as you know, we're doing work out there for that new subdivision, and as a result, we've managed to, as, as the challenges of being progressive happen naturally, we've torn up some of the grass and some of the sidewalks. And Mayor, if you'll be so kind, is to allow your department heads to join us Monday, August the seventh, at six thirty, Old Cobblestone, eighty-six forty-eight Stonewalk. I'll send an email, I'll have our office to send an email to the respective department heads, and I know that Mr. Hamilton will assist us with that in terms of, if department heads can't make it, maybe to get some of their assistants or representatives.
They're looking forward to it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And one more quick thing, I, I want to share this, just if I may. Okay, so on tomorrow, Friday, the twenty-eighth, we have an award ceremony, Huntsville Botanical Garden. This is what I have on my calendar that our staff put on my calendar, that's at eight thirty. Beautification award at nine o'clock. Tree removal for a lady whose house was hit by a tree at nine o'clock. Lunching at the Arsenal at eleven o'clock. Lunching with our former office assistant, Tamika McWilliams, at noon at Carrabas. And I have a meeting with Loz Chapel at three o'clock regarding mid-city. So I'll have a busy day tomorrow and get a chance to get lunch twice, so, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to congratulate a constituent of mine who happens to be my wife, Tangi. Next Monday, we'll be celebrating twenty-four years of wedding bliss to yours truly. And what I really like about that is the fact that we met at one of my town meetings back in nineteen ninety-one. She is keeping very busy these days, taking care of both of her parents. Her father is ninety-two and is extremely grave health, and certainly been a great, great partner. And we certainly have been a great team, working together for the last twenty-four some odd years. Also, one other development with school starting, we had a meeting this afternoon with Mayor Battle, myself, John Hamilton, Tommy Brown, head of the Transportation Department, Dan Sanders, traffic engineer. We met with school superintendent, Dr. Aiken, as well as school board member Walker McGinnis and some other department heads, including the principal of Huntsville High School. Working, and I think some good solutions have come out of seeing what can be done in the short term, as well as a permanent, long-term solution to the neighborhood car parking problem that's taken place during the school year in the, in the neighborhood surrounding Huntsville High School. And certainly appreciate all the good work, good ideas that came, and I think it's a positive for Huntsville that we can have governing bodies roll up their sleeves and work together cooperatively on a, on a neighborhood issue such as this. And I think we're gonna see a lot of progress being made on that situation in the very near future. Madam President, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. We'll go on to Mr. Russell.
Madam President, I'll waive my time.
Thank you, Mr. Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll keep it short. First, I would like to say about, it's been about two, two days ago, I was involved in an incident in my neighborhood. As some of you know, I'm not gonna go into the details because it's almost midnight, but in short, I experienced something that I had never experienced in my life. And I found myself with a range of emotions that I had never felt before. And because of that, I realized what a blessing it was to be in the place that I was and experiencing the things I was, because it makes me make decisions in a different way. I'm not that old, if I'm being honest with myself, though I feel old. But I know that a lot of times, as much education as I try and get, experience as a way of teaching the stuff that we just can't get from inside of a book. So since then, people have been very supportive of the notion that there's a high level of accountability. of accountability in my community, and I just want to take this time to say thank you to everybody that reached out. I learned that I can still take a punch, but I do see it as an opportunity for me to continue the notion that City Hall is not our savior. We do play a role, and we need to play a different role in different districts, but we are not the savior. And everything that we do here from this dais is contingent upon what we can get done legally. A lot of the stuff that I have experienced are things, you know, I pulled a bullet out the side of my house probably a month ago that I sat with the mayor. No policeman stops that. That is the decision of somebody. And I think that, you know, I say this all the time as I talk about Terry Heights, and I'm probably tired of it, but wait till the next year when I move to the next place. I've learned that that community is full of good people, and it's just a few people making bad decisions that is spreading a negative stereotype on a great neighborhood. So my hats off to all the department heads who have, you know, been so supportive, and that leads me to my final point. You know, we were at Community Development the other day. Heck, did it hot dogs. Scott was awesome on the grill. I think he burnt the first batch, by the way. But other than that, we were at a marketplace, and I wish I could have took a drone shot of it. But in Terry Heights, a place where two individuals have been killed in the past summer, burglaries, three murders, or, no, two fires, gunshots, everything. On a Wednesday between 4:30 and 6:30, it looks like the ledges. It looks like Blossom Wood. It looks like any other neighborhood at that church, full of diversity, laughs, kids running around, selling lemonade, peaches, and it's just a great place. How do you replicate that success is something that City Hall should be committed to and find ways to replicate, and I am thankful that I'm on a dais with individuals who are committed to that notion, that we have to make tough decisions like tonight. We have a real unique job here in City Hall to replicate the goodness of Huntsville, so thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. We had the opportunity last week to participate in the ribbon cutting for the new Grissom High School. It is a beautiful building. There is wonderful energy about it, and I know everyone is very, very excited about the official opening next week for school. Anybody who wants to take a sneak peek at it can also come to Commissioner Phil Riddick's Education Celebration, which will be held at the new Grissom High School this year on August 12th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Organizations and schools from throughout District 3 will be gathered there, and it will be a great occasion to celebrate the opening of that school. We'll also be hosting a town hall meeting on August 28th with Dr. Matt Aiken at 6:00, and we'll have tours before and after, so the public's welcome to visit Grissom at those times. Since Grissom has now officially, or is going to be opening, the focus has turned to the old Grissom site. We had a wonderful meeting last week with literally hundreds of people in attendance in the auditorium at Grissom to talk about the plans for the existing site, including an art center, a new library, new ball fields, and the highlight apparently are the pickleball courts. Who knew? But it was a great community meeting. Both that community complex and the opening of the new Grissom High School highlight great things happening in South Huntsville, which is why the conversation we had earlier about the Jackson Bend development was so important. We are going to see some great things happening. Grissom really is a game changer for South Huntsville. It's going to change the face of South Huntsville, and we need to raise the bar and make sure that the development that's taking place is going to be good development, and I truly believe it will be. Finally, Councilman Culver mentioned our administrative assistant, Tamika McWilliams. Tamika is leaving us to go to Philadelphia. She starts a brand-new job next week in Philadelphia. It is a wonderful opportunity for her, and we wish her well. Many people don't know that Tamika has an MBA, and she was underutilized in our council office, and this is an opportunity that really will take advantage of her unique background, her training, and her skills. We wish her well. Thank you all for your comments. We will move on to Item 13, unfinished business items for action. 13A is an ordinance number 17-507 annexing 21.70 acres of land lying on the west side of Balts Road and north of Bordeaux Lane, set July 13th, 2017, at the regular council meeting. The Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second for Mr. Culver. Is there any discussion? Ms. Nichols, share with us what we've got going on here.
This annexation request is in District 5. This property is approximately 21.70 acres. This property is located on the west side of Balts Road and north of Bordeaux Lane. The proposed developer for this property would like to construct, single, excuse me, would like to just construct a senior multifamily development on this property, and currently the property is in the county. They would need to annex it into the city so that they may access city services such as sewer and public safety. And planning staff has evaluated this development, and it does meet all of our protocol and procedures.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Nichols? Or any comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13B is an ordinance number 17-508, annexing 15.47 acres of land lying on the east side of Big Cove Road and north of Ridge Point Drive. This was set at the July 13th, 2017, regular council meeting.
This annexation request is approximately 15.47 acres. This property will be an additional phase to the existing Hampton Ridge subdivision. This property is on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and north of Ridge Point Drive, and the developer would like to access city services.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second by the Chair. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13C is ordinance number 17-509, annexing 6.39 acres of land lying on the north side of Highway 72 West and west of Providence Main Street, set July 13th, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This property is also located in District 5. This property is approximately 6.39 acres. This property is located on the north side of Highway 72 West and west of Providence Main Street. This property is a part of the Beasley Acres Spring subdivision. That was a part of some previous litigation with the CBS next door. Since then, that litigation has been resolved. There's a proposed commercial development that would like to locate on this property, and based on the covenants that are still remaining on the property, this would be a permitted use under those covenants.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding this? Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. Without divulging too much information, what kind of business entity will be going in at that location?
It's a retail component. The exact user, I'm not certain at this time, but it will be retail-related.
Okay, great. Thank you so kindly.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13D is ordinance number 17-510, to declare certain equipment as surplus to be sold at public auction. This was set at the July 13th, 2017, regular council meeting.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 14, new business items for introduction. These will be considered at the August 10th regular council meeting. 14A is introduction of an ordinance declaring property owned by the City of Huntsville located at 2713 and 2715 Wilson Drive surplus. 14B is introduction of an ordinance declaring certain equipment surplus and selling it at public auction. 14C is introduction of an ordinance annexing 5.99 acres of land lying on the north side of Cherry Tree Road and east of Esslinger Drive. 14D is introduction of an ordinance amending ordinance 00-819 as amended by ordinance 06-518 as further amended by ordinance 10-205 concerning use of public rights-of-way by Level 3 communication. 14E is introduction of an ordinance declaring certain equipment as surplus to be sold at Ranger Services. 14F is an introduction of an ordinance declaring that upon transfer of the ownership of the current Virgil I Grissom High School site at 7901 Bailey Cove Road to the City of Huntsville, that site shall be officially known as the Sandra Moon Community Complex. 14G, introduction of an ordinance amending ordinance number 89-79, classification and salary plan ordinance. 15H, introduction of an ordinance amending the budget ordinance number 16-659 to modify the authorized strength of the departments. Again, these items will be considered at the August 10th meeting. We will move on now to Item 15, new business items for consideration or action. Are there any items any council member wishes to hold for separate consideration?
Madam President, I wish to hold 15J and 15AE.
15J and 15AE. Are there any items anyone wishes to, other items anyone wishes to hold separately? There are none, we will move on. 15A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a land lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Pine Lawn Farms for the lease of property from the city. 15B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Sublet Farms, Inc., for the lease of property in North Huntsville Industrial Park. 15C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a renewal land lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Alan Wade Murphy and Kathleen Murphy for the lease of farmland in the vicinity of the Western Area Treatment Plant. 15D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the low bidder, Reed Contracting Services, Inc., for the shops at Redstone Square, project number 71-17-SP38. 15E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a reimbursable agreement between the City of Huntsville and the City of Huntsville Water Pollution Control for sanitary sewer relocation for Martin Road between Old Jim Williams and Zert Road, project number 71-10-RD07, formerly known as project number 65-10-RD07, and LDOT project number ACA60160F, ATRIP012. 15F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an equipment usage agreement between the City of Huntsville and Laughlin Service Funeral Home, Inc. 15G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a license agreement between the City of Huntsville and Make-A-Wish Foundation of Alabama, Inc. 15H, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a license agreement between the City of Huntsville and Homegrown LLC. 15I is a resolution authorizing the Industrial Development Board of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, to grant statutory incentives to qualifying projects under the provision of the Alabama Reinvestment and Abatement Act 2015, number 15-24, on its behalf. 15K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business as Huntsville-Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Madison County Commission for the Transfer of Grant Funds. 15L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business as Huntsville-Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the City of Decatur, Alabama, for the transfer grant funds. 15M, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for engineering design services for River Cove Pump Station and Force Main, project number 71-17-SM01. 15N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a special employment agreement, employee agreement, between the City of Huntsville and Daniel Miller. 15O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Standard and Associates for the, Inc., for the professional services to develop and administer written and practical examinations for the fire driver engineer position. 15P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Standard and Associates, Inc., for professional services to develop and administer written and practical examinations for the fire captain position. 15Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Roofing Services, Inc., Company, Inc., for the roof replacement of Fire Station 5. 15R is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Dunlop Contracting, Inc., for construction services of Cavalry Hill restroom modifications. 15S is a resolution authorizing travel expenses. 15T is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 16-659 by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. 15U is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. 15V is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 16-659 by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. 15W is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the low bidders, meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. 15X is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an application for stop-loss insurance coverage with HCC Life Insurance Company for the purpose of renewing stop-loss insurance coverage for the city's group health plans. 15Y is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke CBNS Bank Letter of Credit Number 555546 for Ansley Farms Phase 1 subdivision. 15Z is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Bancorp South Bank Letter of Credit Number 362000821579 for Old Cove at McMullen Cove subdivision. 15LA is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke CBNS Bank Letter of Credit Number 555544 for Ansley Farms Phase 1 subdivision. 15AB is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke Bryant Bank Letter of Credit Number 1178 for Valley Brook subdivision. 15AC, resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the claim of Calvin Benjamin. 15AD, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a utility agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Alabama Department of Transportation for Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program, ATRIP Project Number 65-10-RD06 and LDOT project number ACA60160ATRIP012. 15AF is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Rita B. League. 15AG is a resolution committing $800 match from the City of Huntsville in support of McThornmore Acres Application for CLG Preservation Grant Funds for inclusion on the National Register of Historic Places. 15AH is a request for authorization to advertise and fill two housing specialists, two positions, grade 13. 15AI is a request to advertise and fill position of civil engineer 2, pay grade 18, and to fill position at steps higher than minimum within the pay grade if necessary. 15AJ is a request to advertise and fill position of general clerk 3, pay grade 7. 15AK is a request to advertise and fill 1, full-time programmer analyst, 2 positions at a higher than minimum salary if necessary. 15AL is a request to advertise and fill 1, full-time telecommunications manager position at a higher than minimum salary if necessary. 15AM is a request to advertise and fill 1, full-time desktop network technician position at a higher than minimum salary if necessary. 15AN is a request for authorization to advertise and fill 1, human resources analyst, 2 position, grade 16, at higher than minimum if necessary. 15AO is a request to advertise the position of safety, security, training coordinator, pay grade 16, and to fill at higher than minimum rate if necessary. 15AP is a request to advertise the position of water pollution control operator 4, pay grade 15, and to fill at higher than minimum rate if necessary.
Madam President, I move for consolidation approval of 15A through 15I, 15K through 15AD, 15AF through 15AP.
Second by the Chair. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to 15J. 15J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease binding between the City of Huntsville and the Green Gate School.
Moved to approve.
Chair seconds.
Madam President, I have questions for the administration, and big supporter of Green Gate School. I think they do a wonderful job, and they've helped so many children, especially children that I know in my district. Could someone please describe the lease for me?
Yes, members of council, you'll recall that two years ago, we entered into a lease with Green Gate to occupy a portion of the Cavalry Hill School that we had acquired from the school system. That lease also provided for the opportunity for them to get a five-year extension, so it's now time to contemplate that five-year extension. They've asked us to modify the terms of the lease to allow the five years to go as one year renewals as opposed to committing to a full five years. None of the other terms of the agreement are changed, so in terms of the price, the arrangement for how we manage the maintenance and utilities, all those kind of things, nothing has changed in terms of the terms. It just allows them to do annual renewals. It also allows the mayor to, you know, so essentially what we're asking you to do is give the approval for the same five years, but for the mayor to enter into those one year renewals with them, as long as there's no change to the terms.
Will those have to come in front of the council?
They would not. So you effectively are still approving the same five-year extension you did previously. It just allows us to do one-year renewals so that they have ability to get out of it if for some reason their situation changes.
Thank you. That's what I want to know. I appreciate it.
Madam President, I guess I'm asking, do they feel like it's going to change?
They haven't indicated that, but I think their board just felt more comfortable not making such a long commitment. You know, they're not a large school, and obviously, they take care of a very specific population, and so the population that they would potentially service sometimes fluctuates from year to year. So they just felt as a nonprofit that's oftentimes operating on a tight budget like many of them do, they just felt like it was better for them to not make such a long-term commitment.
Got it. Thank you.
And I might mention, I'm sorry, they work with children with dyslexia, and there may be a time when public schools take that up. There may be some other things that change, and that just gives them some flexibility.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Moving on to 15AE. 15AE is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a letter of intent with Triad Properties Corporation Crunkleton and Associates, LLC, for the redevelopment of the current city administration building and annexed property. Chair moves for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Davis.
If I could lead this off just a little bit.
Mayor Battle.
We started this conversation, gosh... We started this conversation, gosh, when we, when we first employed U D A to come in to start looking at the process of how we were going to redevelop downtown and part of that was looking at what we were going to do with City Hall. At some point, we've got to do something with City Hall. In that conversation and looking at it, you know, we have marble that could fall off. We have, we have some structural beams at the very top which have had some cracks in them that, you know, we've had people look at it, we're okay with that, but we're getting towards the end of our useful life in this building. So we've got to recognize the fact that we've got to do something with City Hall. The reason, one of, one of the, one of the reasons along with the ideas that we're going to have to invest in parking decks and where to put those parking decks, where to, you know, where we were going to have the development, how to do this downtown right, was the reason that we brought U D A into the picture. As we brought U D A into the picture and we started doing a downtown master plan, we had some developers come to us and say, hey, we would like to do an iconic building in the downtown area, then we would like to do it on the site where, where City Hall is. Interesting. And we started having some conversations and this was as we were doing the U D A downtown, as they were doing the master plan, did not know if anything was going to come of it or not, but as they got more serious, we said that we needed to put before you to have transparency, to let you know what was going on, what we were talking about, that we needed to put, put, we needed permission to get to enter into a letter of intent with the developers so that we could, they could spend some money and know that we were serious about it, that we were, we were going to work with them, but also so that we could put together a development agreement after the letter of intent that would end up giving us a timeline and a timeframe of how we would develop, develop out this property, which is City Hall right here. If you remember, U D A's design had an iconic building, a long church coming along the side of, of Big Spring Park East and, and had a parking deck tied to this. As we got into conversations with them, we wanted to go ahead and go, go forward with a, a letter of intent. A letter of intent is not a binding letter of intent, but it says that we're going to work with you, you're going to work with us. If we're going to ask them to spend, and they probably already have spent, they probably already spent thousands of dollars at this point, if we're going to ask them to spend more money, we need to tell them that they're who we will work with and negotiate with. If we can't come to a deal, then it becomes, you know, we, we have options of what we can do with that property. If it does come to fruition, then we have followed the master plan and we have done something that follows the master plan. One of the natural questions out of this is why these guys? And why these guys is because these were the ones who came to us. They have a solid reputation as, as developers and especially developers of office buildings. They came to us and they have, as part of the conversation in the downtown plan and said, yes, we want to be part of this and we want to invest in it. They have the background of being able to do a project like this. They are local developers, they came to us. They're, if, if, you know, in, in all of our conversations, we have said that if we sell property to them, we have to sell at a praise price, that's the only way to do it. And we have to do as we would do with anybody else because we have city property that we're talking about and public, public property. We're bringing this to you tonight because we, we want to make sure that you understand that we are working on this and it's part of transparency. We don't want anybody who, I know that y'all would be surprised, but somebody sometimes says that there are secret deals going on. We don't want any secret deals going on. We want to make sure that everybody understands that this process is being worked. And as we work this process, this is an L O I. L O I, it does not tie us down to doing anything, letter of intent. It's just a letter of intent, does not tie them down, does not tie us down. From this L O I, we will go forward and we will work with a development agreement and development agreement will be something that will be tied down as an agreement. That will be the second part that we will go to after we get the letter of intent done. And that will be the second part that we will go to. And all of this is subject to council approval and, and also subject to, to us coming to an agreement that we, we feel is in the best interest of the taxpayers and, and the people of Huntsville. So that's, that's where we are at this point. Mr. Davis, if you want to kind of explain what we're looking at.
Very well done, Mayor. I don't know if there's very much left to say, so.
Did I cover all three of your slides?
Pretty much, but pretty much, but just, just very quickly for the public, as you're very well a counsel, you recently adopted twenty seventeen update, downtown master plan, had tremendous public participation, several public engagement meetings of what our community wanted to see in, in both private development and public investment into our downtown area. One of the pieces was Big Spring Park and the properties adjacent to that. So one of the big impediments that U D A found and our citizens seemed to agree in that plan, Big Spring Park is the largest public space we have in our, in our central business district and it's actively used. One of the, the bad things about Big Spring Park is municipal government owns almost every adjacent piece of property along it. And you do not see that in most metros of Atlanta, Nashville, Chattanooga, Greenville, South Carolina. There, there is activities such that after five o'clock, there's, there's a very active presence along that public open space. Everything you see in blue is controlled by a public entity, either Huntsville Utilities, Von Braun Center, of course, is run by a board, but we are engaged through that, or the city of Huntsville, or A T and T, which acts much like a governmental entity in that their property is, is more likely not to be redeveloped. So in, in that master plan update, we said, how could we change some of that? We can't change all of it. There's some foundational pieces like the Von Braun Center and the Art Museum, it's not going to go away anytime soon. And there's some parking facilities that would be very, very expensive to move. So we're working with U D A and the public and the different design threats. We identified some areas in green that could be redeveloped. As the mayor very well put, the city annex site is currently vacant. It is in disrepair. It's been vacant for quite some time. I think you've heard Jeff Easter, our director of facilities, come before the council to get some temporary Band-Aids over the years and then just, you know, some leases to get people safely out of that condition. So, so that portion of the city hall campus, if you will, is a hundred percent vacant, will never have public employees move back in. And as Mayor mentioned, city hall has got some issues and, and got some limited life left to that. The same holds true with the garage across from city hall that's shown in yellow, that, you know, it's, it, it seems of its useful life structurally, as all parking decks do come to a life. I mean, we've done a very good job maintaining, extending that life. I'm not saying we've not done good maintenance to it, but it's at the point of almost needing replaced. So the natural fit in operating city hall with facilities and you've actually, Mr. Hamilton brought before you and Jeff Easter, the first stages of that, of really moving towards a new city hall, of, of doing space allocation for all of our departments, figuring out who all would be in city hall, who would not, and, and start that process on that site based on your adoption of the master plan. So the other location was, was fronting the V B C and naturally with the new city hall, the building that I am in at the corner of Fountain and Engineering and E M A would consolidate into city hall and that would open property up for the city to sell at a market rate to offset some of the city hall costs to allow private development to activate that site. So what you would wind up with is, is some front door pieces along the park that's still controlled by the municipality, city of Huntsville or Huntsville Utilities, but also after five P M. and on the weekends, a place for, for the citizens to give them what they asked for in this master plan, and that's more activities and places to eat, shop, come in and out. And the biggest thing we get is restroom facilities. So naturally, if there's private development occurring on those, there's restroom facilities to use. So as the mayor said, what's before you is, is authorizing the mayor to negotiate and possibly enter a L O I with Triad Properties and Cronkleton Associates for the, for the site that you see in red. That still says there's a long way to go before there's anything to get excited about. L O Is are difficult to come together. It's, it's a non-binding agreement, just says if you do X, we might do Y. And if we get to that and the mayor executes that, the next stage is, is forming what I've brought to you several times, that would be a purchase and sell agreement with a lot of dates and timing for you to consider and a development agreement. So, so there's a lot of hurdles still to, to, to cross. This entity approached us, that we knew had a track record and had looked at U D A's plan and said, we would like to be someone to bring you a vision to implement that plan. Naturally, once we move city hall, something will have to happen to this property, that will be the council discretion. But this is what was approved in, in the downtown master plan update that the public that night, you may remember, really came to the podium and said, this is a phenomenal idea to, we'd like to see happen. So that L O I would, would require Triad Properties and Cronkleton and Associates, before the mayor would execute that, to commit to give us this plan, to give us this vision, to give us these uses, to be in concert with the plan that you adopted. So should you approve that tonight, we will, we will enter into discussions to try to get that L O I in some form that we feel comfortable to sign. We naturally would share that with you if, if that occurs and then come back to you with a development agreement and much more discussions of what would be delivered. This would be just the initial stages to allow them to do some due diligence, to actually do some rendering, some cost analysis to, to see if the project would be feasible, that they would want to enter into a, a formal agreement with the city. I'll answer any questions you might have.
And let me say one other thing, this, this all kind of falls in with the budget. It falls right in line with where, what we're doing right now with the budget. We will, if approved tonight, we will move forward pretty quickly because we want to try to tie it back into this next, next fiscal year budget, whatever numbers we have to tie into to make sure that we can meet our obligations and hit our obligations that we have to do. Couple of other questions that we're going to have to answer internally. Do we lease, do we build lease, lease back? Do we just build and bond out? You know, we have some question marks on how the best, best way is to build this, this new city hall and, and what the, what the functions are to it and, and how to finance it too. So we, we still have some, some areas that we're working through, through this process as we go.
And I would think the, the process to determine whether a, a formal agreement between the city, for you to, for your consideration between city and the developer would occur within the next thirty days, very quickly, once this L O I would give them some assurance to spend money to determine the feasibility of the project and, and, you know, just to be able to do what they want to do and us come back and say, well, we, here's the dates at which we could move city hall. It's not going to be immediate. And, and to work through that, that, that'll come to the top pretty quickly on, from a feasibility standpoint. And we'll know to, to move forward with development agreement to bring for you or not.
Thank you. And Mr. Hamilton, did you want to make a comment?
Well, I just want to talk a little bit to the city hall. I mean, the, the, the need for a new city hall has been discussed off and on in the community for a number of years and, and some of you have been part of that much longer than I have. We have commented tonight about the, the physical condition of the city hall and, and that's the, the component of this issue that's been discussed the most. You've, you've seen previous reports on it and as we approach formal decisions that, that we would ask you to make related to the city hall, we'll, we'll bring you the results of many of the studies and stuff. There's, there's a good bit of engineering assessment that's been done of this facility, of the annex, of the site where we would propose to build a new, and there's a lot of that due diligence. It's already been done or is, is ongoing as we speak and you'll see the results of that. And so I, I think there's, there's no question that the physical condition drives us to having to make some pretty big decisions about the building. But the other piece that, that we've probably mentioned a few times, but haven't spent a lot of time talking about, and again, we'll, we'll bring you more specific data, is that this building does not meet our needs in terms of efficiently and effectively serving our citizens. We currently have city hall scattered about eight or nine different places in our city and not even here in downtown. We have offices that can function much more efficiently if consolidated and co-located with others, but they're in places like Little Mill Neighborhood or other places where, where there's not the efficient interaction between the employees, where they can more effectively serve citizens. So the building a new city hall is also about consolidating government in a way where we can more effectively serve our citizens. And so there's a lot of functions where we can get to a, more of a one-stop shop. So it's, we're more accessible to, to users, particularly folks that are in the building community, but, but also can more effectively interact between employees. We're going through a process right now, contract that y'all approved a couple of months ago with an architect who's doing just that, that requirements assessment. Had a meeting with him earlier this week, looking at where he is and the process right now. And a big part of that is what departments need to be sitting side by side so they can be more efficient and more effective in, in accomplishing their mission. So it's not just about the physical condition of the building, that's obviously extremely important, but it's also about getting a building that's the right size, that's designed the right way to actually meet the mission requirements and better serve our citizens and also be much more efficient. These, the buildings that we're in, so it's not just the city hall, but those eight or nine locations I talked about, these are very old, very inefficient buildings. We will significantly reduce our total aggregate square footage in the process. We will significantly reduce our utility bill, will significantly reduce our maintenance, facility maintenance bills. So, you know, while, as the mayor talks about the need to, to decide exactly how we fund this upfront through the capital plan, you will see payback through the general fund in future years by getting to a facility that really meets modern standards and is much more efficient in its operations, but also the efficiency of just government functioning will be much better because of the facility.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Questions or comments from council? Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Madam President. I have lots of questions, but I want to break them into two parts or two segments. Mr. Davis, and you may have explained this, but I was thinking about dinner. Where is city hall in this?
City hall would be in, in the background. The foreground to your right would, is the current location of city hall in the, I mean, the current city hall. This would be the new city hall, this is Fountain Circle.
Which is actually the parking garage?
Yes. So, so half that block, that's a, that's a city block garage. Half of that would be a new garage in the back and then the city hall, the new city hall would propose to be on the corner right here.
And so what you're saying is the, the city hall hadn't been decided either to rent space or build your, build the, I mean, for the city to own it? That's a decision that hadn't been made yet?
I, I think what the mayor was, was saying as far as how we finance it, whether we would let a third party build that for us and do a lease to own as far as a financing mechanism, or let's just do a bond issue and, and build it like we would an auditorium or any other capital item. I think that's the discussion that will occur before this council at some point in time is what's the best option to fund that from a budgetary standpoint?
And so I guess.
At the end of the day, the citizens will own city hall, you know, in either, at the end of either term, where we did a lease to own because it just, it just helped better financially through a capital plan versus just doing a large bond issue that way. At either rate, at the end of that term, the citizens in the city would own that property and own that building.
And do you anticipate the new city hall being built, moving in, and then turning over the site to the developers?
Yes, yeah. And that's, that's what we've got to go through should you allow the mayor to move forward this L O I, is to figure out some of those logistics and some of those logistics based on our budget of when we could do something with city hall could render this project not to move forward, just because of, of the amount of time it will take us to get to that point and could turn over the site to someone. You know, if, nobody has a crystal ball to know what interest rates will do or what the economy or what the, the unmet need that may be today for downtown might not be there five years from now, if it's five years before we actually move out of city hall. So we've got to have those discussions and that's what the L O I is, is just to give them some assurance that those discussions, while we're having those, we wouldn't have those with anyone else. So, because they're going to probably spend a hundred or a hundred fifty thousand dollars to make that type of determination.
And Mr. Russell, you know, in getting that kind of the phasing of how that construction would work, our assessment right now is there's, there's no employees that would need to move to any leases or temporary space. They, they would all stay where they currently are today. Now, we have employees that are in leases that would move into the new city hall, but we don't see any need for any additional ones. There's really three functions that are affected by this proposed construction project. Obviously, the parking in that garage, we would have to, we'll have to work through a plan to accommodate that current parking capacity. Second, our server room for I T S is located in that building and, and we're already working through solutions for, for movement of that temporarily. And then thirdly, there's a certain amount of storage that's in there. That's pretty easy to solve, but we do have some storage requirements that would have to move somewhere else. And so we're working through all three of those things to set the conditions to allow us to, to demolish that garage and, and reconstruct.
Thank you.
And, and just may I mention, we're, we're talking about redevelopment city hall site. Part of U D A's plan that, that's shown, if you line up with Fountain Circle where it makes the turn in front of city hall, this is an expansion of Big Spring Park. And as I said, any L O I or agreement we bring you, we are going to follow and require the developer to follow the approved plan that you approved and the public helped design and, and asked for in the downtown master plan.
It's probably good to note that, you know, this is the plan that U D A presented, you know, as part of the master plan. The architect that drew these renderings is not the architect for any of the proposed development. Its purpose was to demonstrate to you the scale, but I fully expect that, you know, when the actual architects bring us proposals, it won't look like this. But it will be, this is pretty accurate in terms of the scale that we expect.
Correct.
Mr. Russell, any other questions?
I want to come back, but I would like to yield my time and come back.
Anyone else have questions? Mr. Key?
Well, I guess I'm just asking, because I didn't think about it until Colonel Hamilton said it. Do you start to parlay the other properties into profit? Do you start selling off Department of Recs and then the annex as well?
Well, I mean, that would be a decision that council would have to make. We absolutely do expect there'd be a number of properties that we would vacate, and we would have the opportunity, at this point, in terms of what we can see today, to declare those excess and then be able to liquidate them. And then you could put that money back into to help pay for whatever debt or whatever costs you have of the new City Hall. That wouldn't occur until we've moved into the new City Hall. So, you know, it would come after the fact. Now, does something change two years from now where we have another useless properties? It could happen. So obviously, we'll address that as we get to that point in time.
I have a quick question. I don't remember the council ever having to approve or authorizing you all to enter into a letter of intent. That's usually something you do on your own. Is this an effort to just add a layer of transparency so that people don't feel like this is being rushed, that they're being given the information that they need and as much time as possible to learn about the project?
Very good question, President Robson. You are correct. Because it's a non-binding agreement, the mayor could enter into that without council approval, but the mayor's been very open and transparent. He doesn't want to do that and wanted to bring, before council, have this public discussion and let you guys, you know, decide whether we move forward with that.
Thank you.
And you might notice, we started off with the U D A discussion, and then we wrote the master plan because we wanted the council to approve the master plan, and we talked about the downtown area and especially where City Hall was, because we wanted to make sure that we were on the right track as we moved through this. We have some very good experts who have helped us through this process, and our planning consultant has helped us move through this. But also, you know, we want to make sure that you are involved and the public is involved as we've come along. That's why we had the public hearings on the downtown. That's why, once we got the public plan done and the public hearing on it, then we brought it to council to be approved in that manner, because we wanted to make sure that everybody had a say as we moved through this, because this is everybody's living room of your city right here, and this is, you know, this is one of the epicenters of your city, and your City Hall has to match in with that. If you notice from the building design, City Hall is very much like the other buildings that are there, and it gives you some continuity there. We want to make sure that all that fits together so that we end up with the best development that we can have for the city.
Mr. Russell?
Yes, and Mayor, I appreciate your transparency, and I applaud you for that. However, I don't like these feel-good resolutions that do nothing, and I've always hated them from day one, and so that's why I'm not a very good politician. So, Mr. Riley, tell me why we're going to do a letter intent that is non-binding, why the city council would vote for it, and if we do vote for it, how come it's non-binding? Because I'm going to be on record as voting yes or no, and then you're going to say, "I'm going to vote again, and I can do whatever I want the next time I vote." It seems a very strange concept to me.
Well, the primary reason it would be non-binding is because the instrument itself declares itself to be non-binding. And I think what has been indicated earlier on is, as people get together, as parties get together to contemplate what is a massive undertaking, there is a lot of commitment. And by commitment, I mean a lot of money that people have to invest to be able to engage in those discussions in a rational and sensible way. And so when you're dealing with a private entity like that, I believe they justifiably want some assurance that we're not just flirting with them, so to speak, that this is a serious discussion. And I think that's what occurs here. And so the purpose of this, I think, is to signal to everyone that we are in a serious discussion mode here, but yet to recognize also that we're not nearly far enough along in these discussions that we're ready to enter a binding agreement. That point has not yet arrived, but it's moving forward.
Well, is this going to be the new practice? Is every economic development deal going to have a non-binding agreement before?
No. I would say no.
And if I can say this, this is a massive project that is very important to our city and is in the downtown area that is going to be the new City Hall and what's developed around it. It's important enough, and that's the reason that I demanded, and we had some discussion over that, I wanted to bring out this LOI and bring it out early. If I had come to you and just dropped a development agreement on you that had five different moving pieces, moving City Hall, we're going to build on the annex, build a parking deck here and do this, this, and this, I think it would be very unfair to both the council and to the public. And I think that's why we have to make sure that we are fair to both council and the public. As we roll this out, we want people to pay attention to it. We want people to look at it. We want to make sure that this is what the people want out of what we're doing, the actions we're going to do. We'll get some different ideas, sure, but I think that this is part of our mandate from the people as we've been through this process, because people are very interested in how we redevelop downtown. We could see by having 200 people at a meeting over at the Museum of Art, it was standing room only, just because they wanted to hear what our plans were and what we were looking at. So this is something that is very unusual for us. We usually would not have brought you an LOI, but this is an important enough project that we have enough, and we have talked about it for long enough, that I think that we need to move step by step by step in this and to be as transparent as possible.
Very, very unique. Very good question, Councilman Russell, but as the mayor alluded to, I don't think we'll ever have this situation again where it's uniqueness. Flank to a public park, possibly locating a building owned by the citizens and land to be redeveloped by the public. So, very unique, and I commend the mayor for being very open and honest in public about this. Again, it's very unusual. It's not necessarily necessary, but I think it's just an extra step of transparency.
You said it. I mean, everybody said it's not necessary. We just want to do it. So, Mr. Riley, back to my question and legal advice. I don't know the exact situation, but I've always been told the story of when the council one time voted to approve an agreement with Mr. Hammond in the Embassy Suites, and then sometime later voted against another part of that deal based on the council members claimed at the time that they could vote either any way they wanted to. My memory is, Mr. Hammond sued the city and won because they ended up not being able to do that. And I don't remember the particulars, and I'm sure it's a different situation, but do we have any concern with this, doing this tonight?
I certainly don't have any concern. Of course, in the law business, you never say never. But in this case, I mean, when you're dealing with a document that on its face identifies itself as non-binding on either of the parties, it is difficult to conceptualize how someone would contend that they had been misled by that. It is very clear in that regard. And so I'm not concerned. And, of course, I'm not familiar with anything other than what I observed at the time, being a citizen. I'm not familiar with the nuts and bolts of that earlier decision to which you refer. But I do, from what I do know, those were entirely different circumstances, and certainly not involving agreements and documents that are so clearly stated as this one is, that this is an exploratory situation and non-binding on either party at this point.
And Councilman Russell?
I was in the room at the time, and...
Mr. Quinn, would you like to speak to your left?
Okay. I was in the room at the time, and I don't want to mention anybody's name, but legal advice was given to the council that the first resolution was a, it was a resolution that was non-binding. It was basically saying that of the R F P entrance, this was going to be the firm that the city would, the city council would agree to negotiate with, and it was not binding. I was being briefed with another council member, and that council member at the time said, "Well, I'll go ahead and support this, and then if I don't like it, I can always change my mind." And then there's a trap door that slammed behind him. That's where that came from.
Yeah. Councilman Quinn said that. Councilman Russell, the Embassy Suite Hammond issue is the council affirmed a vote to commit the city and then came back some weeks later and reaffirmed their non-commitment. We'd already made a legal commitment to participate in that project and then came back and kind of changed.
No, I disagree.
Okay. But anyway, that was kind of the argument that we went through there. So, but this is not the case.
Are there any other comments or questions, Mr. Russell?
So theoretically, if we all vote no, we're the same thing as if we all vote yes, in my mind. So why should I ever vote yes? That's what I don't understand. It's not binding either way.
Well, I suppose by voting yes or no, in my mind, what you're doing here is expressing, I guess you could say, some enthusiasm for the project, some buy-in, shall we say. And so that, I think, is the primary import of it. But if everybody voted no and turned it down, I don't think it would stop the plans for City Hall or a new city administrative building in their tracks. It just, it would, I think, be puzzling to all concerned, though, as to exactly what the intent or the mind of the council would be at that point.
May I suggest that I think the purpose of this really is what I said earlier, just an extra layer of transparency. This is an incredibly important decision that the city is making with regard to property that belongs to the citizens, and we need to make sure that we take every opportunity for them to know at every step what we're doing. It may be fluff, it may be feel-good, but I think it serves a purpose for communicating to folks what we're doing with their buildings and their money.
And as Mayor Battle stated when we first brought this item up tonight, we want the council's support. I mean, this is a master plan, you know, the administration's trying to carry out that master plan, but ultimately, you're the council and you pass policy and pass expenditures, you know. We certainly don't want to expend resources on a project or trying to implement a plan that would not be supportive of the council. We certainly don't want a third party to expend money either that they know, you know, may not be supportive to move forward on. That just wouldn't be good business stewards on behalf of the city. So, just to add that point.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Quinn?
The, I'm sorry, let me back up a minute. Is there any benefit, I guess kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Russell said, let me back up, piggybacking on what he said. Is there any benefit on doing an LOI where basically we're locking ourselves in to one company versus doing an R F P to see if there are multiple companies that want to compete?
And this is, I think, our point. If you're going to get what you have from U D A in that type of development, you've got to tie down to one person to do it, one firm who has committed to doing something like this. And getting back to Mr. Russell's question, what if everybody votes no? If everybody votes no tonight, then everybody's going to take a step back. We will be getting with council saying, "What are you looking for out of this development? Is this not the development that you want? Do you want something else?" And we'll be going back, but we won't be asking a developer to spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to come together with something that might be a great development for us or might not be a great development for us, but something that y'all are not enthusiastic about doing. And that's the whole reason that we bring it to you in these stages, and we brought you the master plan in this stage, and then we're bringing this in this stage, is just so we can move along through this and make sure that we're on the right track, that you think we are. But also, the people of Huntsville have to understand what we're doing, too, and we need to make sure that they think that we're on the right track also. And you will be hearing from people over this next couple of weeks as word gets out on this, as Paul writes an article on this. I mean, there will be, people will look at it and start having input on it, and that's the way that you come up with what your city really is looking for.
And I'll come back before the council also, should you, you know, show support of this LOI and the mayor enters into it. We will be getting information from the third-party developer, which we will make public in this chamber and bring to you, keeping you abreast to see if, you know, we're meeting the intent of U D A, if, you know, if we can get it to the finish line. We could be two weeks away after the fact, and just fizzle out and go away.
And you guys can give us compelling data that shows that, yes, it's time to build a new City Hall. The old one, it's just too expensive, too inefficient to try to maintain, correct?
Yes, we will. And if I could hit on a couple of points. One, I think it's important that we emphasize council's not being asked to vote on the LOI tonight. You're being asked to vote on a resolution that directs the mayor to negotiate an LOI. And as Mr. Riley said, that LOI is non-binding is really for two reasons. One is because it specifically states it's a non-binding agreement. Second is because it will be signed by the mayor. And as you well know, council is the only one with the authority to enter into the final commitment, and that will be in the form of a development agreement, which will come later. So there are multiple steps through which council will be presented data and opportunities in this, and then ultimately be brought the decision for the council to make, to make that commitment in that final process. So, you know, it's non-binding for two reasons. In terms of the data, yes, Mr. Quinn, you will be presented, you know, more very, very detailed analysis on all of the elements. And, you know, things that we're talking about, the condition of this building and the opportunity to get to a much more efficient facility, that doesn't go away even if we choose not to pursue the commercial development that would occur on here. So what we really have is the opportunity to leverage the need to move the City Hall with, you know, good development coming in right behind it, and really simultaneous with that construction, so that you aren't left with a vacant property here for an extended period of time adjacent to Big Spring Park. So it's an opportunity through a multi-phase development to get good quality commercial development and a new City Hall through that same period. And this is a multi-year development because it has to be done in phases.
Right. Madam President, Mayor, I would just let you know, I am excited and enthused about all this, and Mr. Riley has given me advice that if I vote yes tonight, that I can vote no on any future item on this, and so I'm going to take your advice, and I'm going to hope...
Always a smart thing to do.
Yeah.
I usually work real hard to have a binding enforceable agreement, and this time it was an odd thing to draw one up that's completely unenforceable.
And if I'm in the deposition and they say, "Why'd you vote for it?" Then vote against it. You're going to help me with that answer, right?
You can even show him the YouTube video.
I'm ready to vote whenever the council is.
Any other comments? All in favor, please indicate. Are any opposed? The motion carries. Mayor, you are authorized. There are no legal department items or transactions. Thank you, Mr. Davis. There are no legal department items or transactions. That brings us to non-roster communications from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to communicate with the council? Ms. Reed?
Good evening. I'm going to tell you I love you. It's pretty hard before I start because I'm fixing to turn in on you. I cannot believe that you change your mind and vote for something that was never brought before a work session, and the public never really had an invoice or a word into any of that things. I've been to five meetings. They told us what they want. We hired a $150,000 council person to tell us what to do with our city, somebody from out of town. I thought you people are smarter than that. You're elected officials. I'm taking that title away from every one of you. And Mr. Hamilton, you're never going to convince me of anything. I've been down here way too long. You can talk and talk and talk all you want to, but you can convince them, but you can't convince me. That should have been brought to a work session. I know that an architect was hired, and there wasn't a bid put out on it. So is this guy tonight that you all just passed redevelopment, was that put out for bid? Or is that some of your friends, too? I'd like to know what's going on at City Hall. It really is bothering me the way you all are operating this city. And where you're putting City Hall, why in the world don't you put it right back on these two lots right here where it is? Use some of the marble that's, you say, falling off, which has been years and years, and put it around the bottom of the new building and try to make us look different from New York City in building old big buildings out there with parking garages, and you're going to rent and lease and help pay for it? Why don't you separate yourself and be a City Hall? There's plenty of room right here on these two lots right here. We own them. I don't know what you're going to do with them. Let your friends rent them, I guess, or give them to them for a 100-year lease. Let your friends rent them, I guess, or give them to them for a 100-year lease. That's what you do better than anything. But why don't you put the buildings back here instead of going down the street, put in a parking garage? And I, I don't know what you're going to do with the parking garage across the street. I'm going to meet up with Shane Davis three days next week. I want to know what's going on in this city, and I know the price of a lot of stuff because I'm way behind, and if I don't have to have an appointment with Mayor Battle to get in, I'm telling you now, I will be talking to Shane Davis. Will I be able to get into the new City Hall? I'm not going to ask you when I get there. Thank you, and have a good weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Please come to the microphone, please. Again, state your name and your address.
Geton Wild, 113 Fourth Street. I wanted to say that you guys are doing a good job despite all the, you know, noise that comes from us in the public. I think you're doing an all right job. I think we need to work on a couple of things, but, you know, I think you're approachable. I see you at the Auto Zone, working on your car, sometimes cut one of your hairs when you need a haircut, you know? And I like the fact that my city council is made up of people that are still in the community and not up in a big tower somewhere. I think that the city council, the revamp of, you know, the chambers, I don't know, we could be creative on that. Maybe we need to rotate which district we're in every week, maybe for a while. Maybe it'd be good to get out of this location. You know, Chamber of Commerce, a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago, was at Salty Nut while we were, you guys, I guess I was here too, were here, and they were at Salty Nut Brewery. And in fact, Campus 805, as I left the house and looked across the street, was packed tonight, and you guys had a pretty good turnout tonight, so it was a hot subject. But right now, there's most of the constituency or citizens somewhere drinking a beer and, and, you know, kicking back, and they're not here participating in government, and we need more participation by the people, so maybe we take the government to the people. I also wanted to say something on corruption and corruption in institutions and licensing boards, and how it shouldn't be tolerated. And there's institutions within the city that have been in operation for years, and, and there's people that come into these institutions and follow the rules, don't bribe, they do what's required of them, and they fall behind because maybe they're the few people that still believe that things aren't corrupt, that, you know, you do what you're told to do, and you do what you're supposed to do, and you get ahead. And I think that it's a shame that there are still institutions in this city that are corrupt, and...
Sir, if you, if you know of any instance like that, you need to make...
I actually would like to talk to the...
No, I don't.
That's fine.
Not publicly, but I would like you to make that report to myself or to the mayor. We don't need to be making those accusations publicly.
Police chief is right here, I think.
No, no. The police chief. That's fine, but, but these things still go on, and people lose faith in government. And I like the fact that my city council is not made up of that kind of group, and that I believe in, in, in our city government, our state government, and, and I'm not accusing anybody here of any of that. I'm saying that these things still exist and that we need to address them, and they need to be handled, and therefore the citizens don't lose faith in the government.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
And I think you're doing a fine job, and I was not accusing anybody here of such measures.
It certainly sounded like you were, but thank you very much for being here. Is there any, anyone else who wishes to address the council? Please come to the, the microphone, give us your name and your address.
Doug Beard, 903 Speak Road. I'll be brief. I understand it's been a really long night.
Please, again, your name, Mr. Beard, your, your name and your address so we can hear.
Yeah, microphone here is a little difficult to adjust. Doug Beard, 903 Speak Road. I'll be brief. Like I said, I know it's been a really long night. I just wanted to make sure, I, I really have been impressed with what the city's been doing with downtown, and I think those plans are really, really a direction that the city should go in, but I just wanted to also, since I'm here in the, in the interest of historic preservation and historic recognition, want to make sure that in the consideration of the deterioration of this structure, the inefficiency, the poor use of the land, that also the historic, the historic value of the structure has been considered, and that this is a building that was central to sending man to the moon. And I recognize that that building may have reached the end of its life, but it's just something should be considered.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, I'd like to make a motion that we meet at Yellow Hammer next session.
I think you said Salty Nut, right? Thank you all for being here. The meeting is adjourned.